This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, October 30th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, this is our Budget Workshop special meeting. At this time, I'll ask our Township Manager to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. Staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I also like to announce that our public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed and posted to the Township website for public access. Agenda item four is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to bring any concern before the Board. Is there anyone? There's no one present this evening. Is there anyone online? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is Budget Workshop Discussion Items. I will turn it over to our Township Manager, Tom.
Thank you. So this evening, we are going to present the budget package to the Board. So we have prepared the workshop packet for your review. And we will do a summary of each fund and then we will turn it over to the Board for any questions after that summary. So with that, I will turn it over to Tricia Dickert, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking time to have one extra fun, super fun meeting. At least it's an early one. We can get a jump start. The Budget Workshop documents were submitted to everybody in advance. So hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to look over it. I think the best way to proceed is just to go through each fund. And we'll open it up for discussion and answer some questions that had been submitted. So for the 2025 proposed budget for General Fund, the Township is projecting $20.73 million in revenues, which is an increase of 4% over 2024. And the expenditures coming in at the same, presenting you with a balanced budget. There were a few items that became clear post-print of the Budget Workshop documents. So I think we'll just take some time to talk a little bit about those items. The first one specifically, the Township was awarded a $150,000 Hamilton Boulevard Road Safety Audit Grant. So we have to add that to the 2025 budget. But what you'll see when we submit the first proposed is that $150,000 increase both on the revenue side and on the expense side. So you're going to see that appear as a wash. The actual impact will be $150,000 on the revenue line for the grant. And then on the expense side, the particular object that it sits on, which currently has $100,000, would then raise to $250,000. But again, the net consequence is still a zero. With that change, or I'm sorry, with the Budget Workshop, I'm sorry, with the Budget Workshop docs as presented, it puts our fund balance at $11.98 million at the end of 2024. The fund balance policy requires the General Fund land somewhere between 20 and 30%. And right now, at the end of 2024, we're expected to be at 57%. So well ahead of the recommendation in the fund balance policy. For 2024, having reviewed a total of nine months' worth of data, we're confident that the cash carryforward is going to be approximately $4.8 million. And of that amount, $3 million is still combined with the monies that were pulled out and put with fiscal stability so that it can earn that extra interest since the rates continue to be pretty good right now. Speaking of the rates, then, where that money is sitting, it looks like the current interest rate is 5%. And interest earned to date from making that decision to move those monies over is just over $367,000. So great decision to pivot that over while those rates are good and start earning money on that money. As far as the cash carryforward numbers, just important to remember that the cash carryforward is once again pretty healthy. But just want to go over all of those things that make up that cash carryforward number. It's unspent carryforward from prior years. It's revenues coming in higher than projected. It's departments obviously making a conscious effort to spend less than what those anticipated needs were. And then finally, just keep in mind, there are some things that are built in for expenses as just in case, right? There are some things that could possibly come up that you can't foresee. So you put that money in there, you hope for the best. And when we don't realize those expenses, that money just then gets added to the total cash carryforward that's calculated. So that said, I think we'll go over some of the questions that were presented to the budget team so that they can be not only read into the record, but for the benefit of anybody that's listening online since, yeah, nothing.
Just real quick, the expenses for that $150,000, what are those anticipated expenses going to be, you know?
For the grant? Yeah, so for the grant, that's primarily hiring a consultant to assist us through the process of conducting the road safety audit for Hamilton. So then the intent is to not just do the corridor near Lincoln, but also to encompass basically everywhere between the municipal limits, you know, and adjoining municipalities. And to ensure that we're not duplicating efforts that have been done in the past and making sure that we're providing a roadmap to make use of good federal funds if we're able to obtain them, as well as any potential public partnerships, public-private partnerships.
All right, so that was my next question. Is the corridor, is that going to be from like the city limits in Altown down to like the Holiday Inn in Lower McCongee? Is that how you're going to describe the car?
Yeah, the best way I would describe is from the whites to Lower McCongee.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can get you the whole.
We're going to be buying with 150 grand because some ideas.
Yeah, I'll get you the whole scope of that. Through the grant application, I can send that out to the Board.
It's a specific grant application that was approved for the Township, so it's earmarked specifically, yeah.
Maybe with trees with it.
The concept is to address all of the identified safety issues, including road safety and pedestrian safety, which there's been studies that have been conducted in the past. But, you know, we need to make sure we're following all current federal guidelines, that we're doing things that are consistent with those guidelines, as well as what Pendot wants to see at those locations. We've really narrowed it down that we need to speak to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission as well prior to engaging any consultant, that we can more narrowly define what everyone is looking for so that we can set ourselves up for success to get funding for the infrastructure portions later.
Thank you.
And then just to add, if I'm not mistaken, this is a no-match grant. So it's $150,000 in with anticipated expenses of $150,000 largely engineering services. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. It's a local share account grant, so there's no match required. And this is through the gaming funds. So we've been successful the last few years in obtaining at least one of those grants per year. So kudos to the staff involved.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you. Fantastic.
Any other questions on this before we proceed? No? Okay, very good, thank you.
So we'll just move on to some General Fund questions. On page three, for General Fund expenses, the question was some department expenses increased while others decreased. And just a request to provide a quick summary of those reasons for the decrease specifically in BOC admin and in community development. So we'll start with BOC. The primary reason for the lowered costs in the BOC department is the lower donations amount. So I believe last year it was $21,000. And we've already gone over the approved donations that came in. So we brought that number down. That's commensurate then to the approved donations that we expect to pay out in 2025. The reason for the lowered cost in the Administration Department is largely a review of reimbursements for the insurance account with respect to the Water and Sewer Fund to make sure that there are no duplicated budgetary amounts. And then for Community Development, the consultant line was lowered. And that's why you're seeing a decrease in CD Department. The second question, as it relates to page six, Object 34244, which is Farmland Lease. The question was, is there a prospective contract for 2025? And was there a contract for 2024? The last contract being remembered was New Hearts in 2023. And the administration response to that is the lease, as approved, automatically renews unless notice is provided by the tenant that they don't intend to renew the lease or if the tenant defaults on the terms of the lease.
So are we going to talk to an individual about these items at a later point or if we have questions now?
We can discuss them now while we're reviewing.
Yeah.
So if I remember looking on the line item, it was $1,000 that went up to $3,000?
Two.
$3,000? Is that, so we're? Excuse me?
It's $2,000 staying at $2,000. They pay $1,000 twice a year for that.
Okay. So my question is, you know, we're encouraging farmland preservation. New Hearts is coming in. Why don't we make it a dollar a year?
That's a good question. You know what? I basically, there was, that's the market price essentially. And that's a very cursory level answer, but that's what was determined previously and negotiated. And it's not, it's like below market price, but generally, there is a nominal amount attached to the lease of farmland.
No, I understand that, but there, you know, we have this open space, they're going to farm it. We talked about farmland preservation in our comp plan and in our landscapes plan. And, you know, I don't know if the $2,000.
Yeah, the other thing we got to think about, Chris, when we're doing that lease, that price was done before we're getting into the PRP plan, which we had to shift a little due to not owning a basin that's owned by the state. So we are going to be, that field floods to come out the back, everyone knows about that. So that is where we're shifting to. So we're going to be trying to put a vegetated swale in there that'll come into the back of the inlet. So the water will no longer, that is going to be a decent price tag to do that, so.
Right, so that's going to, I would think that would cut into their profit margin on the land because you'd be taking some of the the tillable land out. So, you know, they shouldn't be paying for that improvement.
No, you're correct. But where they're going to gain the land back is where the washout is occurring already. When we did meet with him this year, it's getting substantial, the washout. He will be able to farm all that now. So he'll actually get a little, I don't want to say more, but it should almost balance itself back out.
And we had a USDA representative out there to ensure that we're, you know, in accordance with their nutrient and their conservation plan. So I believe the intent is, as Herb indicated, to make sure that we're actually helping them regain some of their, you know, tillable areas.
Okay, I'm good with that. Now, how far does that land go over? I wasn't here for the donation. Does it go to the back of those houses on the other?
No, there's a section of land in there that is owned by somebody else. So we don't own all the way. You'll see where it's cut down right now. We don't own that section right there.
And all the sale of the crops go to the New Hearts?
Well, yeah, I would hope so. But I was just wondering, $2,000 is not, I mean, it's not market value. It's, it seems like it's just a placeholder. If that's just a placeholder, then why not a dollar? This is my question.
Is there cost to the Township clearly with the work that we're needing to do for this runoff there? So other than that, do we incur any expenses?
We have minor expenses for the "do not enter" signs when they get damaged. But majority, no. We do the roadside mowing, which we did whether we owned that or we didn't own it. It's in our right of way. So I would have to say no to that question. We don't do a lot of maintenance to that. If it wasn't farmed, we would have a lot more maintenance than we would have to maintain that whole field also.
I have a question for you. When are you proposing to do the work with the vegetated soil? Is that coming up in 2025?
We are trying to get that in. We're working with DEP right now because we have to amend our current PRP plan that we currently have. We have till the end of 2025 to have it finished. So barring we have a mild winter, we're going to look to get in there so we're not tracking mud out to the road and all that. We're going to look to get in there, hopefully, right after leaf season to be able to start this. And once DEP approves the change in the PRP plan.
Which has to go through a public process to do that. So that will come back to the Board.
Any other discussion on this? Are there any other Commissioners who comment on whether or not it's appropriate to keep this lease as?
I'm fine with keeping it as is as long as it's under market value. I wouldn't really want to put a sort of excessive burden on them. They are doing a, they're providing the Township with a good use of that.
And how long have, we've leased that land to them for a long time. Well, prior, it wasn't ours.
Yeah, the current lease agreement was done in, like, I think, believe, mid-2022. And then it's an automatic renewal.
And they were paying a similar amount, presumed to?
And I would be misspeaking. Yeah, I would imagine that is the case, though, but I can double check.
It certainly seems like a nominal amount. I'm fine with keeping it as is and?
Yeah, someone has seen a lot of agricultural leases. This is not an absorbent amount in terms of agricultural leases. I can attest that. You're not overcharging.
Is it in line with a typical?
Yes.
For that amount of?
In line or below?
Okay, so we're not above?
No.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay, very good, thank you.
So staying on page six with revenues, the question concerning Object 36715, which is a library lease. And it looks like a 25-year term lease began with the library on July 1st, 2020. And the terms of this lease were primarily negotiated by the former Director of Finance. Any questions? No. Page nine, if we look at BOC Meals and Food, which is Object 40229. The question was just an explanation on what that expense, what that line is for. And it's really just a placeholder for the Commissioners if any meals are needed at public meetings. Closed sessions, it looks like, is the reason for that as well. And if a BOC member is attending an event whereby there are meals at cost. Anybody have any questions on that? Nope, okay. Page 20 for Bike Maintenance, 40385. So 40385 is sort of replacing the bike costs that were situated under Object 40241, which was general materials. What's happening now is instead of putting that on general materials, it's going to go on 40385. The budget team wanted to separate the bike expenses so that we can adequately track the expenses as they relate to both e-bikes and traditional bikes. So the new object will cover both of those types. Any questions? Okay, page 43. Is it everywhere? So page 43, Object 36255, which is miscellaneous revenue. The question was just an explanation on what miscellaneous revenue means and how the values have varied over the years. I'm sure when you look at the history of that line, some years are up, some years are down, which obviously triggers the question. So the miscellaneous revenue GL line is sort of a pot where unknown revenues go into. So these are things that we received that were unexpected, where it wasn't budgeted on a particular targeted revenue line item. The example given is for 2024, we received an MRM dividend reimbursement of just shy of $39,000, and that was an unknown reimbursement to us. So because we had no line to put that on, because it's not a revenue or reimbursement that we were expecting, that is an example of something that would go into miscellaneous revenue. There are some other odds and ends. Let's see. There was a MetLife dividend check that we receive a few times a year. Some money that we receive for scrap metals. Things like that are all items that would dump into miscellaneous revenue. Okay, so the next question. The following departments list the largest General Fund expense increase over the 2024 budget. And do the increases reflect additions to staffing, new programs, equipment, et cetera? The Public Works expense increase was approximately $321,000. And the Police Department expense increase was approximately $901,000. And so that I don't miss any of the reasons in the response that was given, I'm just going to read that out. These increases are primarily related to contractual obligations and account for wage increases as well as a nearly 15% increase to the Township's overall health insurance premiums. Generally, these increases do not reflect additional staffing, new programs, or new equipment. It is important to note that all police information technology-related costs in 2025 were shifted to the Police Department operating expenses, which is line 40452, as opposed to having the costs remain in the overall Township IT line item. The purpose of this budgetary shift was to better reconcile the operating costs of the Police Department. Additionally, the overtime pay line item for police patrol was significantly increased for 2025 to account for the anticipated expenses as they relate to Dorney Park special jobs. That's for both the park and traffic. However, the revenue side was also increased within the 2025 budget to account for that increase in overtime as well. For 2024, the Dorney Park revenue received was set up to offset the expense from an accounting standpoint. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Tom, and I guess, Tom, overtime budget was anticipated staffing an officer up in the parks. Cover Bridge Park again, like we had to do this year, anticipation of similar.
Yeah, so we've accounted for that in both the police overtime budget as well as the Public Works budget because we were late in the season using Public Works employees as well.
Right, right.
So the budget was actually constructed in such a way even for this year that we had flexibility to do that.
Okay. So question eight relates to Public Works. And the question is why we're seeing an increase from $20,000 to $60,000 in engineering. The increase accounts for the Township's renewal permit for the MS4 program, which is a five-year permit with a renewal due to be filed pursuant to PADEP requirements honored before July 1st of 2025. The actual permit expiration date is April 30, 2026. This increase also accounts for the revised pollutant reduction plan that must be filed for the Township's MS4 permit as per PADEP requirements. No questions? Question number nine, PNR Community Events. So that's Parks and Rec Community Events, increased from $30,000 to $38.9. And then the question was, were new programs added for 2025? And what does the Township do to seek sponsorships for those events in an attempt to offset some of the costs? The administration response is that no new programs were added. The increase is proposed in order to account for an increased cost relative to current programs that the Parks and Rec Department administers. The Township does not currently receive significant sponsorships from external entities. However, we do receive program revenue on line 36720, page seven. Any questions? Question 10, as it relates to Public Works, is the demo of Township-owned houses on Brickyard. A tree fell on one of the houses during a storm a few years ago and did the Township file an insurance claim for the damage that was sustained to that house? The response to that was that it predates most of our time here with the Township, but it's our understanding that the Township may have filed an insurance claim. I believe Tom researched this and he found that we did, in fact, file an insurance claim for that.
That is correct. And we received just over $14,000 from that claim based on a just over $16,000 amount of damage.
No questions? Question 11, as it relates to the Police Department and the Heroes and Helpers Program, where currently there's $9,000 being budgeted for 2025. The question was, this program serves the entire Parkland School District. And is this event expense divided equally or in some part between South Whitehall Township, Upper McCongee, and North Whitehall Township? And then subsequent follow-up question was, what is the dollar amount of sponsorships and donations that are typically received? So again, as not to miss anything, I'll just read the entire response here. The expense is not equally shared between the three entities. The sponsorships and donations received are conservatively forecasted and budgeted as $4,000 in the 2025 budget based on historical trends. Upper Mac donated $2,500 in 2023. Parkland School District donated $1,500 in 2023. For a total of $4,000 between the two entities. It's important to note that the 2024 budget was the first fiscal year where the revenues and the expenses were separated for the program with no revenues or expenses incurred to date as reflected in the 2024 year-to-date figures. So that's a program where you won't see a number yet because that is a, that's a program that doesn't happen until, is it late November or early December? Okay. So you wouldn't see that in your year-to-date figures through September 30th because it's not expenses that we've realized just yet. The 2023 donation amounts totaled $5,220, including the amounts contributed by UMT and Parkland against total expenses of $9,920. The budget team broke out the revenues versus the expenditures within the 2024 budget to better help track and reconcile the actual donations received and the actual costs that were incurred.
So did we approach North Whitehall about making a contribution since it's? So did we approach North Whitehall about making a contribution, since it's part of their students as well?
My understanding was, yeah, that they have approached them in the past. I'm not sure they were inclined to do anything. I don't know the most recent time we've approached them, but...
Question number 12, which I believe is a few questions, as they relate to the reduction in fire costs. The Fire Fund, the first question is why the increase in overtime from 3,000 to 9,000? And the answer to that is when we reviewed the majority of the overtime costs combined, the Fire Marshal Building Code position, those were costs that were largely included in community developments budget, and some of that was shifted over to fire, or do I have that backwards?
Majority of the costs are incurred in the Fire General Funds line item from training and attendance at emergency events.
Should I keep going? The health insurance decrease from 34,000 to 13,000 is the result of the removal of the Fire Commissioner position from the budget. That's what allowed the deduction from 34K to 13K. And then again, the Fire Marshal Building Code official, those costs are split between Fire, which, in the general, I'm sorry, the general fund portion of Fire and the community development account. Fire Fund, the general fund expenses decreased by 93,000, and the question was for us to provide details. The decrease in expenses are related to the removal of the Fire Commissioner position, and the personnel costs relative to the Fire paid positions are paid via the general fund in fire-related accounts. Any questions? Page 27, for Parks and Recreation Community Events. I believe this really was a statement, maybe a suggestion, not so much a question. If at all possible, it's strongly encouraged that the township seek sponsors for some of the community events. Sponsorships, no matter how small, obviously, are still going to benefit the township, and I believe the township is in agreement. Township personnel concur with this assessment. Parks and Rec sponsorships donations total 3,835 to date for various programs. And while we do not receive sponsorships, while the township does receive sponsorships and donations, the Parks and Rec manager is going to make a concerted effort to reach out to the community and see if we can increase the amount of sponsors we receive for those So that, we have a few subsequent questions that came in after the fact, so I'm going to add in those questions for the record and for the benefit of anyone listening. And then I think we'll just open up, we'll open the floor to any additional questions that you may have, or questions as a result of the answers to some of the questions that you all had.
Very good.
So the questions that trickled in recently were pretty much all related to the revenues, so we'll just go over them one at a time. For 2024, you'll see that the estimated revenues for the realty transfer tax was 700,000. As of September 30th, 2024, we were at about 647,000 towards that 700,000 that was budgeted for revenue. So the question is, the 850,000 proposed, I think the question is, is that too high? Just keep in mind, when we are looking at revenues through the end of September, we always have to take into consideration what October, November, and December usually deliver us. So as best practice, what we try to do is we try to look at maybe the last two years, the amount of revenue that trickled in over the course of the fourth quarter, and then we take an average of those two amounts, and we add that to wherever we're at for month end September of 2024.
You're referring to a page on the left side of the packet? There's a sheet of questions.
Chris, behind your first packet, there should be a single sheet where there were some extra questions. You have it?
Everyone have it now?
Okay, good.
Apologize.
No, it's okay. I should have laid out that it was in your packet behind the first set of papers. So just to break these numbers out for you, again, we were at 647,000 as of September 30th. In 2022, between October and December, we received an additional 430,000. And for October through December of 2023, we received an additional 312. When you combine those two amounts together and you come up with the average, it would be approximately 371,000. So us adding an additional amount of 150,000 made sense while still remaining conservative, so as not to overshoot what we think the actual revenue coming in would be. Makes sense? Okay. As far as admissions tax revenue, and I won't repeat the October-through-December concept through all of these, because I think at this point you guys get that. So we'll just go through the admissions tax revenue for 2024. The budget was 1.7 million. The actual as of September 30th, 2024 was 1.721, so already coming in ahead of revenue for admissions tax. And keep in mind, you've got the whole month of October where we know is pretty busy, albeit just the weekends, pretty busy for the taxpayer that contributes largely to the admissions tax revenue. So what was proposed as revenue for 2025 was 1.85 million, and the concept is the same. So taking the average of 22, the average of 23, what would that get us? How much extra should we be budgeting while still remaining conservative? And that's how we came up with the 1.85 million.
I have a question I had too, because those numbers stuck out to me as well. My concern is, in 2024, they had the new ride that they highly publicized, which may be the increase in the income coming in up to 930. Is that going to happen again next year to the tune of another 150,000 on top of their splash ride that they put in this year? So I'm not really, I didn't feel comfortable thinking that they're going to see the same. I hope they do. Don't get me wrong. I hope they do well. Just not sure.
Well, also keep in mind, though, 2023's admissions tax dropped a little bit because we were dealing, I mean, they had to close the park a bunch of days because there were wildfires happening where the smoke was trickling into our area, and they closed the park down. So we try to represent a good balance of what we think we're not going to get. Would the new ride have drawn additional crowds? I absolutely agree that it probably would. But knowing that this amount that was added to the admissions tax as still conservative, we're still confident that we're going to hit that revenue amount.
We have a new agreement with Dorney on the admission.
No, the previous agreement keeps rolling along. Yeah.
Are we working on that?
With the merger, it's compounded.
It looks like in 2023, their August number was, I'm sorry, in 2024, their August number was down a little bit. So you see that fluctuation where, could it be related to new attractions when it's high? Sure. That wouldn't necessarily explain the dip if we're going off of the new attraction theory. But I think it's, it's not a static, not a static answer, and when you're forced with having to make assumptions and put best guest estimates out there, all you can really do is rely on the figures that you have.
Right. And their August numbers dip always, historically dip compared to the rest of the year, because their busiest time is July, late June, and then the month of July. So I'm sure if you look at their numbers from late June and July of '24 compared to '23, I just don't think, I mean, if you think it's conservative, that's fine. I think that is a little bit aggressive compared to previous years. I mean, what's there, you know, yeah, you still have, you still have money coming in that you might make it to 1.8. But then, you know, again, for this year, for them, their attendance numbers were higher because of the new ride. Are they going to be able to match those numbers? I know we don't have crystal ball, but...
To your point, I mean, any year can be completely compounded by a number of factors, whether it's weather, whether it's, you know...
But taking the weather out of it, what are they planning on doing next year to attract the numbers they did this year to increase their attendance? Well, in 2024, they had the new ride. They'd been beat two years prior, they've been pushing it, pushing it. There's really no splash attraction that they're going to, that they have coming up for 2025 to get those people to come in like they did in 2024.
Some of the increased numbers too, I think, are from the new, like, weekly carnival events that they did, which I believe they're going to continue to do that.
They, and that's not new this year. They've been doing those for a couple of years.
Well, aren't their other parks going to be able to come up?
See, that's where there's some unknowns, like how they're going to change their programs, or mix it up, or, you know, we won't know that probably till the beginning of next year. I understand your concern. I mean, it is, it's more aggressive than we've been in the past.
Yeah, and that's my, it is, I think it's aggressive compared to the historical numbers that you presented. I'd just rather be a little under, you know, I'd rather have to overshoot our income projection than come up short.
Yeah, the only problem, it then becomes, where do we, we'd have to find the money then, in the general fund, which we can do that if that's the direction we need. It's just, within reason, we need to understand where we can cut those amounts.
I appreciate the inclusion in this answer of the projection for the end of this year to be at 1.912. And it does seem that the 1.850 projected for next year seems like a good balance between where we thought would be this year and where we ended up, and if you're actually below what we're expecting to receive for this year. So I think that you've taken into account a little bit of room for that ride, you know, might have not quite as many, much of an attraction next year, but it still will be there somewhat. But that's just my personal feeling. I think this is a good, reasonable estimate. But only one person, so I'm interested in the other board members' questions.
I mean, so we don't have to approve now, we're just having discussions, and we can, you know, right? Because we're not going to prove anything tonight.
No, but we do need direction so that we can make sure that we have it prepared for advertisement, for consideration of advertisement.
Right, so that's something I would, you know, I would ask that you reconsider, or I'm not, you know, like I said, I understand what Commissioner Kelly's saying, but I just think that that increase that we're going to see to somewhere around 1.75, right, would be a $100,000 increase from the previous year, which would then justify the 1.85 for 2025. But I just think the 2024 number, and we're saying it's a nice year, it's nice weather, because obviously we can't take any, you know, we can't predict any of that, but that ride had a big influence on them doing well this year versus 2025.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I think another way to look at it, though, is it's not necessarily an increase on what we proposed for 2024. You could look at it as actually a decrease on what's expected for 2024, because what's expected at this point for 2024 is approximately 1.9. So you can either look at it as us increasing the revenue by $150,000 on what we originally budgeted for 2024, or you can look at it as us budgeting, you know, $62,000 less than what we actually expect to receive. And the number for the...
Where'd you come up with 1.9? Like...
That's what we expect to end with at the end of 2024, because keep in mind, we still have another month's worth of revenue.
All right, I didn't know that you're expecting another 280,000 for the last three months.
It's about 160,000 that we'll usually receive for the October admissions tax.
That's in the answer.
How much?
So when you take the amount that we're at right now as of the end of September, being 1.72 million, and you add what we expect to receive on average of $160,000 like we did in 2023, which arguably could be higher, based on the very same thought process that that extra ride could have drawn additional crowds, we're then looking at forecasting for 2025 an amount that is less than what we expect to receive for 2024. I think that's maybe the missing link. The missing link is that extra month that's just not reflected in the total revenue that we've received yet, because we won't get that from them until the beginning of November. And actually, you'll, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom. And you'll actually, you'll see, we'll see that number when the October financial statements are done. We'll be able to see what did that October number end up being, and was it close to what we received October? I mean, it says here October through December, but we know the large portion of that is admissions tax that was paid for the month of October. We'll be able to see when those October financial statements are done, did we, did they or we indirectly perform better or worse than the 16952 that was received for the fourth quarter of '23?
Yeah, and the 1.9 million projections, based on the average, not the 160, it's the 191,55947 to get to the 1,912,87262, correct?
Plus the average.
Right, it's the average, it's not the 160.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
So basically, your projection is more than we budgeted for '24, but still under what we're likely going to receive. So the goal is to sort of hit the middle. Yeah, my comment is, Chris raised a good point. So thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for explaining your thinking. The only thing I would say is, I'm fine moving forward with the projected 1.85, really for the reason that, you know, this is the gamble you take with projecting revenues. Unfortunately, you know, this is not, this is not a revenue source that we can accurately predict like we can with so many of the other sources, taxes, and fees. I will say, the one thing that gives me at least somewhat a sense of confidence, being okay with this number, is Dorney Park, at least in the past year, has really been beating the drum of getting their message out, and their marketing team and their advertising team has really beat the drum with the new ride and everything that comes with that. And I have no doubt that, considering that they are part of now a larger chain, that there's a lot more competition for them within their own, you know, parent company, the fact that they really have to prove to the higher-ups at Six Flags that they're continuing to be not just profitable, but sort of exceeding expectations. I have no doubt they will find something to drum up the same or higher attendance, or some new population to appeal to and to bring to the park. So I have a lot of confidence in there. I don't see them backing off, honestly. They've really been on a roll this past year, and I think they're just going to try to milk that for as long as they can. So I have the same hesitation about, you know, the projection as I do about a lot of the revenue sources, but... probably the best we can do unless, unless the board wants to go in a different direction. And next year, you know, we'll, we'll reassess. And if we were way off, then we just have to take a closer look at these months. I'm fine with it for, for now, but I.
Okay. So basically, Chris brings up an excellent point, but I really do think that this was well thought out. I'm okay with these numbers and, you know, we can always look back and see how we do within the next year, within the next few months. Dorney not only had that new ride, which created a lot of hype, but they also had that 100th year celebration of Thunderhawk, and that brought a lot of people too. And as long as they celebrate the rides that are somewhat historic and continue with the innovation as the Carnival nights and Haunt, you know, we went back to Haunt, we were there twice this year and every year it's different. Like you can compare it to the last year and every, every year it just keeps getting better and better. So I'm pretty sure they're going to be really creative, innovative, innovative with the years to come. So I'm, I'm okay with this, I really am. And I, having said that, I'm not an amusement park specialist.
And if it provides an additional lever, level of comfort, we, we are typically coming in under budget every year as well. So, you know, there, there is some leeway there as well. We're not maxing out every single line item, as noted earlier.
On the expense side?
On the expense side, is what I mean. So, you know, we're, there's some items that, you know, we're budgeting for as a contingency that we don't need, but we need to budget for them in, in case of, of an emergency and so forth. So, you know, we're not, we're not relying on every dollar of the revenue in order to, to meet our, our profit and loss, if, if that, if that helps.
So we'll keep a tally of what Herb saves us over the next year. No, that, that's, that's true. And if you look at the audits for the past few years, we've, every department done exceptionally well, keeping expenses, expenses under, under what was budgeted, especially Public Works, just a notable, notable example, so.
Yes, we're very grateful, each department and each decision that's made for purchasing, the way that the, the care and concern is given to stay within budget as, as much as possible, and it's reflected in the numbers that we're reviewing tonight. So kudos to, to all staff. Thank you.
And, you know, it's, it's not an exact science. You know, we, we know what forecasting looks like, right? Sometimes you're going to get it right and, and sometimes you're not. And trust me, I don't think there's anybody looking at these revenue numbers and how we forecast and going, you know what, let's get it wrong. So, I mean, the inclination, especially with Kristen and I, when we're looking at revenue numbers and we're going, what do we do? Trust me when I say, in every case, we are looking at that conservative. And quite frankly, the reason is because we don't want to be sitting in front of you going, okay, we budgeted, we, we expected this and we came in well shy of that. We would much rather be having a conversation with you that, that is along the lines of, we expected this, what we thought was in, in a conservative way, and guess what? You know, we blew the roof off of that. Now, we don't really have anything to do with that, right? In this particular case, it's a large taxpayer contributing to most of this. But trust me, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to have the conversation that we did this and got this, than we did this and came in shy. That's not really a conversation either of us want. Now, can that happen? Of course, that can happen because we know that that's what this is, right? This is crystal ball mode, is what it is. All you can really do is consider the factors, consider the trends, and make the best decisions from there. We feel like we've done that in a conservative way, but if we're sitting here 12 months from now going, you know what? You know, maybe we did overshoot and we tweak it for 2026, it's, it's all, it's all relative. And unfortunately, for a particular tax like this, where the success, or I don't know if that's the right word, where it's so dependent on so many other outside elements, whether it's a, a new ride or an anniversary that's being celebrated, celebrated, or whether it's making it dip in the other direction, they're really just unknown factors. But, you know, trust that we would much rather have the conversation that we came in above than we came in below. So we'll always try to stay conservative.
And, and I appreciate that. I just don't want to have that conversation either.
Yeah, trust me, we don't.
Not good.
Appreciate the explanation and a little bit of a glimpse into the analysis that you use with historical data to arrive here. It's, it's really very.
I would agree, and I think if you came before us projecting 1.912 for next year, we'd be having a much discussion.
Well, I don't know. Let's see what October through December ends up being.
Thank you.
Should we move on? Okay. So the next question was related to special police revenue. The 204,000 proposed against the 90,000 in 2024. As of September 30th, 2024, the actual is approximately 61,000. So just to keep in mind that $120,000 was added to the proposed revenue and you'll see that cost as an offset on the police overtime line. And that's largely related to the Dorney Park traffic expense and then reimbursement.
And this is based on the agreement we had, you made with Dorney.
Right, so I was just going to add, the, the agreement expires at the end of this year, so we would need to strike a new agreement for next year, which we would typically do in, in the March timeframe, once they know their schedule for next year. So if, if they were to not be inclined to renew the agreement, then we would need to more closely monitor the overtime for the police so that we're not, you know, utilizing all the expense side without incurring the, the revenue side, just to clarify.
I appreciate the explanation. I guess I'm just curious in the future, and it doesn't need to be for this budget. We've got additional costs that get reimbursed from outside entities, and it might be helpful for me to see, you know, money in, money out, like this is what we budgeted for overtime for the park. This is the revenue that was received from them, so we can see the net effect. The more, have a better picture of the budgeting in the future to forecast.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, it's like an overtime breakdown, right? Like this is what was the result of just the, the, the normal policing? And then this was the overtime that was expended as a result of, well, just since we're not picking on them right now, but as a result of the Dorney Park.
Reimbursable from an outside source as opposed to tax dollars.
Is, is that something we could easily pull in Unis?
Yeah.
Or at least pull the information?
I really don't need it for this year. I'm just thinking in the future, we've got.
We might have it though already.
Different grants that come through. It's just, you see it in one portion of the budget and then you see the expense in another. And to see them come together and understand what the bottom line was. I know the police DUI grant is another one that I was curious about. I know that we house that grant here, the police department does. But what is, what does it look like at the end of the year?
Yeah, I think Kristen keeps a running tally.
I can certainly give you the, the breakdown of the revenue that we get on all of the extra duty jobs that we call, that's what the revenue side is. But in terms of like, the police telling you on their side, I would have to work with them to get the expense side to help with that.
I'm confident with the numbers for this year. I'm thinking just for, for next year, it might be something that if it's not too much of a accounting nightmare, just to give us a little glimpse of, of actually how that all works. But I'm satisfied with the information and the data we've been given this year. I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Any additional questions on that line? And then the final question as it relates to revenue is for school resource officer reimbursement. For 2025, we're proposing 350,000 against the 300,000 that was forecasted for 2024. Again, keeping in mind that as of September 30th, 2024, that line was at 184,000. So in 2024, two school resource officers were added for Parkland School District. At the time, we needed to estimate how much revenue would come in to offset the cost of those two officers. Now that we have some real time data to compare, you know, it's, it's, we believe that the 350,000 more closely matches the actual costs for all four school resource officers. The 184 actually only reflects two quarters of the billing so far in 2024. And then keep in mind, we obviously have two left.
So do they pay for nine months of the SROs or do they pay for all 12?
Nine.
Is that the same thing? Tom, if you could just refresh my memory, what, what are the terms are our SRO agreement with, with the school district? Do they, do they basically reimburse us for the entire costs of, of those officers employment?
So what we do is we take an, we have a base rate and an hourly rate. Oh, an hour, well, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm thinking of special time, hold on. Yeah, just, let me pull up the agreement.
There's no, it, basically, since, since the SROs, at least, most of them, not all of them, are basically in the billing.
Right, so I get their actual schedules and I bill based on their wages for those actual time periods. I bill the FICA, I bill the dental, the health, thrift, all of that. So our entire costs for the SROs are billed during the period of time that they are specifically doing all SRO duties.
So if there's an overtime rate, is that the same thing?
Correct. I have their, I have all of their shift differentials, so they're billing exactly what we are paying our officers.
That was the, my basic question was, is there any expenses during those nine months that aren't covered by the reimbursement?
Do we make an administrative charge?
Don't believe so, no.
So that summarizes all of the questions that were asked throughout the course of the last 12 or so days. And I know we sort of paused in between and had good, healthy conversation on a handful of items. But I think just opening up the floor to any additional items upon review of the workshop book that any of you wanted to discuss. Speaking with, staying with general funds, since that's the one that we're working on right now.
Are there any questions from the board, from all of our discussion?
So are we going to go into the individual accounts then, is, is this?
I mean, we don't.
Parks and sewer and water and so forth?
We'll do each fund separately. So if, if you have any questions as it relates to revenues or expenses within the general fund that we didn't touch on through the conversations we've had so far, you know, it's not your last opportunity to ask, but maybe just easier to compartmentalize all of it per fund as we go through the funds.
Okay.
May I please circle back to Heroes for Helpers? I remember you saying that North Whitehall didn't really contribute in the past years. Does that mean we're not going to ask them and reach out, or can we continue?
The police administer that program, so what I'll do is ask them to ask, but I've, I've been told explicitly in the class in the past that they're, they're not interested in donating, that it's.
Ever, like we don't even want to donate.
That's not my understanding, but I'll double check. I could be wrong, but I will, I'll double check. Yeah.
My only additional question on that item would be my, similar to my suggestion for, for Parks and Rec, that we sort of pursue a more aggressive sponsorship program. I, I think Heroes and Helpers is a, is a phenomenal program. It would be a good opportunity for a local business, a large or small, to assist. It's good for them, it's good for the kids, good for the officers. Comparable to some of our other smaller Parks and Rec special events, also seek sponsorships or events of those types, ideally you could get them offset by some of the wonderful community partners we have. Again, it's, it's small, but it adds up.
Yeah, the other thing is, one reason they might not donate is they use state police. They don't have a police force in North Whitehall, so. And it's Heroes for Helpers, but again, that doesn't mean they can't budget something and give a donation. But I, I'm just speculating as to maybe that's why, that's all.
It's not, the police administer the fund, they go out and they do all the PR, but it goes to their kids. It's not, like, it's not their police department participating. It's, it's a program that, that grows out of there for the whole park and that goes to their kids. It's not, police just happen to administer. If we could have Heroes and Helpers and, you know, another service could, could administer, but it's still going to go for the, for the kids in their, in their township.
It's more for the.
No, I agree. I was. I'll touch base with Community Relations Sergeant Groger and confirm at what level of outreach is being conducted for the municipalities and for, in, in general donations.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry. So just so I'm clear, I don't mean to belabor this, but we'll circle back and ask the question as it relates to Heroes and Helpers and restate the, the seeking additional sponsorships for our Parks and Rec programs.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to fire fund next. So for the fire fund, we're projecting 1.36 million in revenues for the year 2025. That's a 1% decrease over what was projected for 2024. Budgeted expenditures are projected at 1.160 million, which is an increase of 32% from 2024. The way that breaks down is revenues of 1,360,000, expenses of 1,160,000, leaving a surplus of 200,000, which would then be transferred into the fire apparatus account. Additionally, there will be a $200,000 transfer from the general fund into fiscal stability. And we can put that towards the purchase of the replacement radios for the fire departments.
Do you have a balance on the fire apparatus fund? I didn't see that.
Merchants.
The fire apparatus fund has $462,000 at, at Wells Fargo, plus the million dollars plus interest that we have over at Univest. So there's a million plus interest at Univest and $462,000 for apparatus. Oh yeah, the ARPA also has a million dollars for the apparatus as well.
So there's two.
So there's two fire apparatus at Univest, both having the million plus interest.
2.4 million.
One is already committed though to the aerial.
That was, I was going to ask, what was, what is that as committed already?
A million, million and change, yeah. Well, some, some of that's ARPA though, right? Yeah, the overall cost is 1.9, so some of it's ARPA and some of it's money that we put into the fund.
So the 2.4 roughly, 2.462, 1.9 is committed to the aerial, so that leaves about 500,000.
Correct.
Roughly.
I would count it as 200 million for the aerial, because it, it's a lot closer to the 2 million mark than the 1.9.
2 million. So that is 4.62 as of now, the end of 2024.
And it looks like the interest earned to date on that fire fiscal stability is approximately, oh, that's the fiscal.
That's fine, 460 is fine. That's, thank you.
So the forecasted cash carry forward for the fire fund is 816,000, just, just over 816,000. And then that'll also help with the, the upcoming replacement project for the radios. The cash carry forward, keep in mind, the cash carry forward also helps to fund the first three months of the year, when those tax monies haven't started coming in yet. So that little, little, that cushion has essentially built up to a point where we no longer have to loan the money from general fund to kind of get us through, or to get the stations through those first three months. They, that, that cushion exists there now to serve itself.
So the cash carry that you're going to have from 2024, that's going to go to help offset the cost of the new radio program?
It can, yes.
Where does it go if it doesn't?
Stays in the, it stays in the cash, cash account? Yes, stays in the cash account.
And likely could look to put in, into the apparatus fund, depending on what happens with the radios.
Right.
Generally speaking, we take some of that and put it directly into it, but with the radios, we didn't put that portion in the budget for this year.
The radio project, there's still a lot of unknowns in terms of. In the radio project, there's still a lot of unknowns in terms of how that's going to be handled. So we just want to be prepared and have flexibility.
Well, the question always gets asked, what do we, what happens with the leftover money, as you know? I have an answer.
And then the notes on the cash carry forward, I think we probably touched on most of these, but you know, we'll just restate, you know, from the onset, the fire budget is structured to end up with a surplus that can then be used for saving for fiscal, saving for capital, saving for apparatus, and in this case, the radio replacement project. And then again, you know, we discussed having that cushion, having those funds to be able to get them through the first quarter of the year until that tax money starts to flow in.
Very good.
Hi, so there were, I believe there was just one question as it related to the fire fund, so I'll read it into the record. It was related to fire fund expenses on page 35, which are combined expenses. The question was accounting and auditing services, and why is there $60,000 being proposed for 2025, but that expense didn't exist in 2023 or 2024? And the answer for that is the, the audits, the fiscal audits that will be conducted on the use of fire tax funds for all three of the stations. We expect that cost to come in at approximately $60,000. I almost said $600,000. Who's paying $600,000 for three audits? Any questions on that?
My only other question on the fire fund in general, and maybe our, our subcommittee members would best be, or answer this, Diane or Chris, what apparatus-related expenses, if any, do we expect to sort of come down over the next number of years or after we?
You mean like an apparatus replacement?
Yeah, what's next on the list?
We actually have a plan.
We have to wait for the plan.
We have, we're going to be receiving quite an in-depth study on that from DCED. So Herb and I have been working on that with the DCED consultant. Almost every other day or every other week, we receive quite, quite a bit of questions or requests for information. So we've answered it in a timely manner, so we should be having the benefit of those, you know, the, the report probably late December, early January.
Very good. Answer your question.
Yeah, it does. It's just something that's always sort of on our minds, especially as we continue to grow, you know, being without, without any one piece of equipment could be problematic, so, especially for the firefighters.
Yeah, this, the study will reconcile what the township needs and help provide a roadmap for replacement.
So if, if there are any additional questions as it relates to the fire fund, again, it's not the last opportunity to ask them, but if we're going through this fund by fund and you have any, maybe while we're in that mode, it's best to ask them now.
Any other fire fund related questions?
No? Okay, very good. So we'll move on to the water fund. For 2024, the cash carry forward for the water fund is expected to be just over 3.2 million. For the 2025 budget, we're projecting $13 million in revenues, which is an increase of 167% over 2024. The budgeted expenses are projected at 10.83 million, which from 2024 is an increase of 148, 148%. That breaks out as revenues being 13,042,704, expenses of 10,836,488, with a surplus of 2.2 million. It's important to note that one of the changes that trickled in after the workshop documents were printed was an additional $12,000 that we'll need to make the MRM insurance payment. So when we put together the first proposed, you'll see that the number will be different by the tune of that $12,000. It's going to make a change on the object that is 40378 and take it to $64,000 from 52. Also important to note that LCA is raising their water rates in 2025 by 4.95%, but at this time, the administration is not seeking to raise the rates on the residents. Our fund balance right now, it will put our fund balance at 8.1 million come the end of 2024, which is greater than the 5 million that's required in the water fund balance policy. To date, interest earned on the water fiscal stability monies is just shy of $179,000 with an APY of 5%. Then just keeping in mind, the water budget itself is structured to build the fund balance and prepare for capital infrastructure expenses. It also includes the unspent carry forward from prior years. And the biggest contributing factor to the percentage increase this year is the start of the Nestle project that we expect to come online in 2025. They themselves will be using up 500,000 gallons of water.
Michelle, for the benefit of residents who may listen to this meeting online, could you expound on LCA's raising their water rates by 4.95% for next year, but the township is not indicating a water rate increase be passed on to the residents? Could you just explain the reason why?
I mean, I'll, I'll let Herb speak to water, but I can say, I mean, generally speaking, if we felt like that fund was not in a healthy position, you know, maybe the conversation would be different and we would be asking for a percentage increase.
I'm certainly very happy to hear we're not proposing.
For sure. But I'll, I'll let Herb to speak, I'll let Herb speak to any other specifics that might be driving the decision to not seek or pass that rate increase on to the residents. Thank you.
Yeah, the reason we're not proposing to match the LCA increase, one is due to the extra revenue we're going to be projected to be getting in 2025. The other reason, we have a healthy fund balance, our water system is in very good shape. We have a capex plan that is laid out, and it also resembles, when we did the rate study, that shows we don't need an increase also. So we did look at all those factors going into it to determine if we did want to put a little increase or if we didn't. And after we got that rate study back of showing zero increase, not needed, that solidified what we needed to do then for us.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb.
So we, we used to have to pay a higher amount from LCA if we used over like 750,000 gallons or something like that. Would building that second tank up on, up on Brickyard increase the capacity that we have to lessen the amount of water we have to purchase from LCA over time?
That, that is a tricky question. That, it could go either way, Chris. Yes, we could end up having to purchase a little more if something would happen to a well or two. As it stands right now, when we did the analysis with the second reservoir and we lost our biggest producer at Jacoby, we could still operate fine. We would not need to take any more water from the city, the other wells could accommodate it.
Well, I'm looking at more of us producing more water for our residents and relying less on LCA and their rate increase.
We are already pulling our max amount out of the wells we have now. We're only permitted for so many gallons per minute out of each well.
Right, that's what I was saying. If that second reservoir was built at Brickyard, would that help lessen our reliance on LCA and their fluctuation in water rates? Whereas we have more control over the water that we can produce for our residents and then control the increase in rates, et cetera, et cetera, without, so a rate increase would be, LCA raises their rate 8%, let's say, right? Is there a way, if we had that second reservoir, looking long-term, that we then control, we could produce more water? And even though they raised their rate 8%, we, we could pull less water from them, therefore lessening the impact on residents?
Yes, and we're going to do more analysis after the second reservoir is built to be able to answer that question more in depth. Because with that reservoir, 500,000 gallons of that is going to flow every single day directly to Nestle. The other reason we need that reservoir is for fire control. So we have ample amount of water in the township at all times. So once we get this built, see how the daily flows are going, you're 100% right, Chris. It could back our number down what we need from the city. Until we run those tests and get that data, I can't sit here and say 100% that that's what's going to happen.
I, I just not, I don't want to be at the whim of LCA.
Well, we already are, we can't put any more wells south of Walbert. That's in the agreement. We can go north of Walbert and add more water sources. So we do have a map where there are fractures and we are looking at that already to potentially add another source to the north and pipe it directly to the reservoirs, which ultimately, yes, then we could lower that number.
Thanks.
Great, great question. Thank you for the information, Herb.
So the, the two questions that filtered in as it related to the water funds was for Public Works, the new booster pumps at Spring House Station, and will the township be seeking funding through infrastructure grants? The response to that is that the expenditure itself is funded through the tapping and allocation fees that will be paid by Nestle to connect to the township's public water system. Those fees are accounted for on the revenue side of the water fund. And then there was a health insurance question for the water fund as well. The health insurance increased from 100,000 while the sewer fund decreased 16. And just to provide some additional information, testing fees increased from 60,000 to 150,000, and providing details for that as well. So the proposed budget shifts are personnel costs to the water fund as opposed to the sewer fund due to the fiscal health and stability of the water fund. The increase for the testing fees, however, is necessary due to the PADP compliance requirements for the lead and copper service rule. Any additional questions on that? Okay, so let's talk credit cards.
Talk what?
Credit cards.
And there's a memo on the right side of our pamphlet.
Yep, so the next, the next item is a discussion about credit card implementation and automatic ACH. And if you look on the right side of your folder, it's going to be the first memo that you see. Inside the folder on the right-hand side. There we go. So I'm going to, for the purpose of the record, I'm going to read this memo. I would come up with extra words, but actually the words that Kristen and I came up with earlier today are, are quite fitting. So let's not, let's not reinvent that all over again. So just for some background information on how the township uses a third-party processor for online credit card payments. Right now, we use a third-party processor by the name of Paymentis, and that is for the residents to make water, sewer, and refuse payments online as well as payments for rec desk. It's come to our attention that as of December 31st, 2024, Tyler, which is our ERP, is closing the communication link to all third-party payment processors, with the exception of one. What this means is that third-party credit card processors will no longer be able to direct link into Tyler, again, our ERP, to process and post online payments into our resident accounts. We've done some research to try and figure out ways where we can continue to offer the ability to pay those utility bills online using credit and debit cards. However, with Tyler closing the link to all but one third-party payment processor, our options are limited. We requested information from the sole third-party processor that Paymentis is keeping, I'm sorry, that Tyler is keeping that link open to, which is OpenEdge, and we received a response from OpenEdge on October 22nd, 2024. Below, we'll lay out what the fee schedules look like for the various payment options we have explored using Tyler Payments and OpenEdge. And additionally, we reached out to Wells Fargo to see if and how we can process credit and debit card payments in person for permits using their platform. It's also important to note that the reason we're able to use Wells Fargo for permit, credit, and debit card payments, but not utility payments, is because much like Tyler, Wells Fargo can only deposit into one checking account. Permit payments are deposited into the general fund, and those monies cannot be commingled with any of the utility funds. Additionally, because Wells Fargo is considered a third-party processor as well, there would also be no open link from Tyler to Wells Fargo causing that same issue, not, not allowing the payments to direct post to, to taxpayer accounts, resident accounts. So if we just take a look at the fee schedules, we'll start with Wells Fargo. For Wells Fargo, in-person payments made with a credit or debit card would incur a fee of 3% when passed on to the person or the business that is applying for that permit. The example that we used is $100 and the overall charge for an in-person credit card payment would be 103 to the person pulling that permit. So on the next page, we'll move on to the scenarios as it relates to shifting to Tyler payments. In-person and online payments made with a credit or debit card with Tyler payments would incur a fee of 3.75% when passed on to the resident. The example given is a $500 payment would cost the resident 51875. In-person and online payments, if the township absorb, is structured a little bit different. They would incur a 5%, they would, I'm sorry, they would incur a 0.5% fee plus 50 cents per transaction, plus interchange costs. If, again, if this is absorbed by the township. Now interchange costs can range, and the best information we are able to obtain is that that interchange rate can vary between 1.5 to 3%. So what that means is that 0.5% at best would be a 2% fee plus 50 cents per transaction. At worst, it would be a 3.5% fee plus that 50 cent transaction. There's a lot of numbers in there, there's a lot of percentages in there. So how that shakes out for anyone making a credit or debit card payment in a model where the township absorbs the fee is $500 would equal $515. As for online payments made by E-Check or for a resident requesting or desiring to sign up for automatic ACH pulls from their account, the fee for that, whether it is absorbed by the township or passed on to the resident, is $1.50. So you can see that fee is obviously significantly lower than the percentages that will accompany credit card payments. Moving on to OpenEdge, we'll do it in the same exact order. The fees, if passed on to the resident, would come at the cost of 3.5%. So a $500 payment would be 51750. In-person and online payments made that way in a township absorb model, a $500 payment would cost $509. That is a 1.75% fee plus a 25% transaction fee. 25 cents, I'm sorry, not percent. As far as ACH payments through OpenEdge, you can see it jumps up pretty significantly. And OpenEdge does not offer a model where that ACH transaction fee is passed on to the resident. The only option through ACH through OpenEdge is a model where the township absorbs that cost. The way OpenEdge structures their cost for automatic ACH payments is basically tiered. There are four tiers and it's based on dollar amount. You know, first tier would be 0 to 5,000. I believe the second tier is 5,000 to 10,000 and so. I believe the second tier is 5,000 to 10,000, and so on and so forth. Using that same $500 example, the township would have to absorb a fee of $5.30. So, we're gonna list some fee scenarios here, and this is basically just an attempt to provide you information on what those costs would look like based on what the transaction totals were for the year 2023. Obviously, that's the year that we have a full 12 months' worth of data. So, the scenarios listed below are based loosely on online credit debit card payment totals for the year 2023, where there was approximately $1 million made in online credit debit card and e-check payments. Based on the fees outlined above, this impact would have been as follows. Tyler payments for resident incurred fees would have totaled $37,500. And if the township had absorbed those fees, it would have been approximately $30,000. For OpenEdge, resident incurred fees would have been approximately $35,000. Township-absorbed fees would have been approximately $18,000. So, I just want to talk for one second about these township-absorbed fees, okay? What we did here to try and come up with the best number is we based it on a $500 transaction, which would give you approximately 2,000 transactions. I can tell you that a lot of these transactions are for less than 5,000, which, I'm sorry, less than 500, which would drive up the count, and then it would, it would probably significantly change what costs the township would have realized under those rate structures that are above.
So, just, just go, go back. What, what's the resident-occurred fee and a township-absorbed fee? I don't, you talk about a credit card fee for Tyler payments, 3.5%. And then, you know, you have your, what fees are we absorbing? What fees are the resident absorbing?
So, so, right now, the township is not absorbing anything. So, these scenarios were basically laid out to be able to demonstrate with you knowing that we're going to have to figure out how to move forward with credit card payments. It's an attempt to demonstrate to you what the fees would look like if we continue to pass it off on to the resident, and what the fees would look like if there was any desire to absorb those costs.
So, why the different numbers? Why 37, 37.5 for a resident and only 30, 30,000 for a township?
The fees are, the fees are less if the township absorbs them. So, the fees are structured where they're higher if it's being passed on to the resident, and they're lower slightly in some cases, not so much in other if the township says we're willing to absorb those costs on behalf of the residents. So, it's just being laid out to show you what those look like stacked up against each other.
Because the agreement with the vendor would provide for the lower fee.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
How would we absorb them? Where would that come from?
So, let's, let's, let's get through the rest of the memo because, you know, we've, we've given this a ton of thought, especially over this short period of time. And we feel like, under staff recommendations, we've come to what we think is the best, the best option based on the situation that is put in front of us, okay? So, finance staff recommendations is that we, number one, use Wells Fargo for in-person processing of debit credit card payments for permits. The fee will be 3%. It'll be passed on to the person or business desiring to use that payment type. We can continue to use Paymentis to process only our online payments from rec desks for the park and rec, the park and recreation programs and pavilion rentals. Those fees will continue to be passed on to the person desiring to reserve that way, and those rates are set forth already by Paymentis at 3.16%. We're suggesting that the, we move to Tyler payments for the in-person and online utility bill processing with credit and debit cards and e-check payments, and the fees are passed on to the resident. The recommendation is that we set up automatic ACH payment processing for water, sewer, and refuse bill through Tyler, and we again pass those fees on to the resident, keeping in mind those fees on a Tyler payments model were $1.50 per transaction. We think a good balance here is that we have an opportunity to promote an incentive initiative for residents to enroll in automatic ACH payments for utilities, and we'll explain below how we think that, that incentive initiative could work. Right now, what we know is with the impending stop date for the third-party credit card processors to link directly with Tyler, unfortunately, we have to make a decision as soon as possible. If we enter into an agreement with Tyler and we move forward with Tyler payments, they will allow that direct link with Paymentis to stay open until the transition has been complete. It's important, important information is the board, I'm sorry, important information for the board is if we do nothing and we stay with Paymentis for online payments, resident payments will no longer immediately be applied to their accounts. Posting every credit and debit card payment would have to be done manually by finance staff. This manual posting would consume most of that employee's day, and it would interfere with all of the other duties and responsibilities that she's assigned. We believe automatic ACH enrollment will not only reduce the volume of checks that are written and checks that are processed, but that it will also decrease the number of late payments. It also offers our residents a more cost-effective way to pay their township utility bills. We recognize there are many residents who currently pay online with credit and debit cards, and many who would like the ability to pay that way in person. We also acknowledge that the new fee structure for credit and debit card processing is significantly higher than the current fees with Paymentis. For this reason, we feel strongly that incentivizing residents to enroll in automatic ACH should be a top focus for 2025. We feel like this can be accomplished by using the $8,750 that was initially encumbered by board approval on November 15th, 2023 for the equipment and implementation of in-person credit card processing with Paymentis. That start, the startup equipment cost for the Wells Fargo recommendation and for the Tyler payments recommendation is 935 and 709, which would leave approximately a $7,106 balance on those funds that were encumbered to implement in-person credit card payments with Paymentis in November of 23. We're proposing to use $6,900 of the remaining $7,106 as incentive for the first 575 residents that enroll in automatic ACH payments in 2025. That incentive will be given in the form of a $12 credit on their utility bill to offset the first year's cost of ACH payments. I'll just read the last sentence, and then we'll, we'll have hopefully a healthy discussion here. So, the action being requested tonight is discussion, decision, and approval on how the board would like the finance team to move forward with the credit debit card and automatic ACH processing. I turn this over to you guys.
Tricia and Kristen and your team, thank you for compiling all of this information in a very well-laid-out memo for us to absorb and discuss this evening. I guess I certainly have a question because I just don't understand. So, ACH payments would come in directly into our systems that wouldn't require any additional staff time to process those?
That's correct. So, there's, there's a little bit of processing. It's just similar to now. So, it's, it's a file that gets uploaded and it automatically posts it versus having to pull that customer account number and manually post an individual payment. It's a file upload instead of manual.
Okay. And what is the current cost for Paymentis for an in-person?
I got this wrong last year. I think I said $3.95.
It's $3.39 and $1.50 for e-check. So, for, if you use your credit card, it's $3.39 per $500. And if you use your e-check, like that automatic pull out of your account, it is $1.50 per transaction, which is the same price.
Oh, it certainly is a significant increase that we're talking about.
And if the people continue to write an old-fashioned check, there's
Then there's no change.
And when do you expect that if we were to go with your recommendation to go with Tyler payments and Paymentis would stay open until the transition, what period of time are we talking about until that?
We, we talked to them and explained to them. I've been working on credit cards for the township for about five years, and we've gotten this close about 10 times for pushing the button to be able to do this for our residents. And every single time, obviously, we run into what we run into, right? And so, here we are again, and it's now, there's no time, right? And so, we've explained to them how important this is, that this is no later than the end of the first quarter, and for us, that's already too late. So, as soon as you give us the direction of whichever way you would like us to proceed, we're immediately going back to start our process of getting us there. We were literally a week away from receiving a machine when we found out we had to stop again.
Very disappointing. Sure, I know that's a topic we've discussed
Inexhaustible.
Many meetings, and I know residents certainly enjoy the convenience of paying that way, so.
Yeah, and just to, just to preface on that, you know, a reminder that if we go down the Tyler payments path, they have agreed to keep that link open until the transition is complete. And I think that's the best opportunity to use that time to do that outreach, you know, to incentivize or encourage enrollment into ACH. Ultimately, while it sort of seems like the only silver lining, to be completely honest with you, that $1.50 that it would cost them per transaction is still less than the $3.35, 39, than the $3.39 that they would be paying for that $500 transaction. And then, there's no limit, right? So, it's, it's based on per transaction, not necessarily you're capped at that $500, which is the current cap that they deal with.
I have a question. How, how do the utility companies doing this right now?
So, it's, I mean, I don't work in utilities, but I, I would guess that they build that into their fee structure on the front end so that it can be just, absorbed isn't the right word if they're building it into their fee structure. I think it's built into their fee structure on the front end.
That's something the board would like us to explore. I know the last time this was brought up, it wasn't something that it was, was discussed that we've built it into our fee structure, but is there any appetite to, for lack of a better term, absorb the fees, which would have to be put right into the funds themselves?
So, here, here's a question before we do that. The people that have sewer bills but no water bills because they're on a well, their sewer cost stays the same throughout the year, right? But we just, could we incentivize them to play all in one in the first part of the year and incentivize, say, we'll absorb the fee if you pay your sewer fund in the first quarter? What, what would be the backside, the, your downside of that? Would that cause you more problems or?
I, I mean, I don't necessarily know that it would cause significant problems. I think you how do you, how do you do it for one and not?
Well, because we can't, because the, the people on the sewer that has the same rate, because we don't charge, like I have water, so it's a percentage. So, I never know what my sewer bill's gonna be because it's based on my water bill. But if I have, live where there's a well or I'm on private water, and my sewer bill is $150 period, could we say if you pay $150, we'll absorb the fee for that cost? So, now, we don't have any more fees down the road, and in theory, save money and get our money earlier.
So, if I could 2% discount or something like that, Chris?
Well, I'm just saying, we'll absorb the fee if you pay your sewer bill that you can predict because it's a set fee in the first quarter, we'll absorb the fee. We won't give you a discount. We'll just absorb the fee, the processing fee if you pay by credit card or, you know, the others of those way to pay.
So, in order for us to do that, it's kind of an all or none situation. So, in order for us to do that, if the board, if that's something that the board would like us to do, the way for us to absorb the fee for them is they would have to pay that $1.50 transaction fee, and we would have to credit back their account the $1.50. Because if we turn this on and say that the transaction fee is $1.50, it's turn it on for all or turn it on for none. So, in order for us to do that, we can certainly do that similarly to how we're talking about incentive and, you know, doing the first 575 for those customers. Once they pay that, they set it up, and we see that, we would have to be able to go back to their account and do a credit of $1.50, just so that you understand that's how we would be able to.
So, then next year?
They would have a $1.50.
A $1.50 credit.
Correct. That's, that's kind of the only way for us to, unless you, like I said, it's all turn on the fee or none turn on the fee.
Or if it's, but on that, if it's township-absorbed, and that's the model that we go to.
You have to absorb it for everybody.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Okay, yeah.
But if it's township-absorbed, couldn't you come back and say, we, for these people, we absorb $5,000? Then you do a transfer from the general fund into the sewer fund to pay for the absorb funds, absorb fees?
We tried to guesstimate the cost for us if we choose to take on the fee for the ACH. So, let's just kind of put a perspective out there. We have approximately 10,000 residents that get billed four times a year for three things. Now, we all know that some of them have trash only, don't have water, have sewer, don't have that. So, that's, it's a really rough number. So, approximately 10,000 residents get three bills four times a year. That's about 120,000 bills that need to be paid. Of our residents, one-third of the residents get all three bills at the same time, four times a year. So, they could pay them all, and that's one transaction. So, those people would receive four transactional fees of $1.50, and the rest, the other two-thirds, get two bills, water and sewer at one time, and refuse at another time. So, they would have to have two transaction fees a quarter, so $3 a quarter, right? So, if we said, we tried to estimate, like, what if 25% of our residents sign up to do this, and we are saying we're going to absorb this fee? It's approximately $60,000 that the township would have to figure out how we were going to pay for this. So, if you take $60,000 and divide it by the three funds, $20,000 has to be paid for out of water, out of sewer, out of refuse, if the township absorbs, and approximately only 25% of our residents sign up for automatic payments, just for a perspective in a large number.
And, and that 25%, again, you know, we're, we're back to making assumptions, you know? We don't know, is that 25 low, or would there be significant more interest in signing up for automatic ACH payments? So, like, the best we can do is gauge it off of that 25%, but if that, if that percentage is higher, that's great, right? Because the money is coming in a good electronic way, but then you're going to realize a greater expense than split out over three funds.
So, I have two comments taking all this into consideration, and maybe other things will be raised that, that change my, my opinion. I, I'm I'm personally fine with the recommendations you made, and, and for two reasons. Any attempt to absorb the, the costs as a township, I feel either directly or indirectly, or then passed on to residents who choose not to pay with a credit card. There are plenty of residents, a lot of older residents on a fixed income that, that like to do it, you know, the normal way or the old-fashioned way. Come in, you know, pay, pay via check. That's done. I think to pass on costs to them by others who choose to use a credit card would, would largely be unfair. And, and the second is, I, what I also want to avoid is an administrative nightmare for you all in having to, you know, reimburse transactional fees, try, try to figure out how to split the cost, you know, across refunds. It, it just seems to me that, that the simple solution here is go with your recommendations. Pass the, the cost on to the residents who choose to pay with a credit card, but, you know, recognize and point out that it's, it's not mandatory fee. You choose to pay with a credit card, you'll have to pay the, the small percentage. You choose to pay with a credit card, you'll have to pay the small percentage addition. Nothing that's precluding you from, from paying with a check and avoiding the fee altogether. It's, it's up to you. And I think based on the way the world is going, I know a lot of small businesses, particularly restaurants now choose to pass on their, their credit card, you know, fees to their customers as opposed to just eating the cost due to, you know, increase in other costs. I think as we see our budget numbers tighten and our expenses jump and we really have to be aggressive with pursuing revenue just to ensure we have a balanced budget at the end of the year. I think the same way of thinking, you know, has to apply to this. We don't want to start absorbing so many costs where eventually we have to, we're already passing the costs on to the residents, but we have to take any measures to pass any more costs on. So I, there's a lot here, something we've been dealing, as long as I've been tuning into meetings, at least like four or five years now, this has been a discussion. It changes from year to year. I mean, in a year or two, we know regardless of what we decide to go with, we could be in a different situation. We could be in a better financial situation where we're able to not pass on the cost. But to me, the simple solution for now is, is to go with your recommendations. You do deal with this on, on a day to day basis. You're the ones that are going to have to administratively handle this. And again, I would hate to put costs directly or indirectly on residents who don't pay with a credit card. To me, that's just, that's just unfair. It's a great benefit to use a credit card as it is to use a credit card at any store. There is a cost associated with that. When I think that's the perhaps the, the least of a bunch of not ideal options.
Yeah, and you know, just, just piggybacking off of that, I mean, I'll go so far as to say, like, this conversation is exhausting, right? Like Kristen and I have been dealing with this, I think since I started with the township. She's been dealing with this before I even came on board. I'm sorry?
Goes back to when I was on the board before.
It's exhausting, and I think we've all reached a point where, like, we just need to see a conclusion to this. You know, the, the other thing I would suggest, sort of off the cuff, sort of off the cuff, is we have all of 2025 then, right? To look at poll data, what does that transaction data look like? How many people showed interest in enrolling for automatic ACH payments? How many polls are that? How many polls is that? How many transactions is that? What would that be if we did decide to, you know, absorb the cost of the $1.50 ACH transaction to incentivize a more electronic way? And then leave the credit card payment people, you know, to continue to pay that, that, that way and realize that fee if that's the way that they're choosing to continue to make their payments. So we can track the data for 2025, once we start to see what the interest is. But I really, I really genuinely do think the only way that electronic ACH process is successful is if we make it an initiative and finance to use, you know, let's just say three months, right? Like Tyler Payments realizes, we just want to get this done at this point. And if that's the direction we go, we want it done yesterday. But we also need time now, right? We need time to make sure the residents understand that a change is happening likely. We'll just use the date, likely the end of the first quarter. Here are some options. Hey, here's this incentive program where we're going to credit your utility bill $12 to defray those $1.50 transaction costs for the first year or for 2025, I guess I should say. I think it's really important how we use those first three months of the year. If this is the direction we go, how we use those first three months of the year to really try and push the message of automatic ACH payments.
The way I look at it, it's a simple cost benefit analysis for, for anyone that has to pay these bills. Is the, is the benefit gained by not having to come to the township, you know, wait to be waited on, process the check, is that worth the additional cost of, of using a credit card and doing it in another way or not? For some people, you know, if they're exceptionally busy and, and eating an additional $15 is, is not that big of a deal for them, they'll choose to pay with a credit card. If they really are on a, on a tighter budget, then, then they'll be, they'll still have the option to save money by, by doing it the way most residents have always done it. So that, me for now, again, we're probably going to revisit this.
Well, if you're writing a check, if you're writing a check, you're still got to put a stamp on there and you know, and the cost of the checks. Yeah. So how much are stamps these days?
I think the important part is to make sure that, like, sure, the credit card fees are large, but they can, regardless of whether or not they set up automatic ACHs, if they pay by e-check, it's still only $1.50 per transaction. So if they go in and pay their water, sewer and refuse bill in one swoop using their e-check information, that's only $1.50. So while it's $15 if they use their credit card, it's $1.50 on e-check, regardless of whether they set up it automatically to pull or they do it themselves on their own time to do that, it's $1.50. But we, we, we're saying, you know, to help reduce all of this stuff. If we're pushing this, we're trying to push the setup, the automatic stuff. You don't have to worry about when the bills happen, it's gonna, you know, it'll, it'll come in, it'll, you know, the money will go out. There won't be all those additional things. You don't have to worry about late payments. You won't have to worry about checks coming in late, getting a late fee on your refuse because the check got lost or held up. All of those things kind of go away. And so that's kind of where we came with the, let's try and incentivize the first. You know, this is, the, the 575 is just the amount that we could pay for out of the money left that we had already had. So even if the board wants to talk about, if you want to figure out a better number where we use a little bit more funds somewhere else, we can incent more people at the $12, but we used the funds that we already had. So our proposal is not asking you to use any more budgetary numbers for '24 or '25. We were trying to stay in the confines of what we already had. But again, like if you, you know, Chris is talking about for, you know, the people who have the sewer, if there's other ways that you want us to do that, that's why we had to have this tonight. Because if it does have a budgetary impact, we need to figure that out tonight on how we'll go about that.
I'm in favor of what you have proposed. I think that's the easiest way and probably the most, looking at these interest rates or the, the additional fees, it's probably the most cost effective way for our residents. And I think it's going to involve some education too, that we're not imposing that percentage. That is the credit card. You're paying for a service and that's what that fee is, what that cost is.
I think us stressing the convenience fee, like making sure that we always talk about those fees for the customers and using the words, it's a convenience fee to pay with your credit card. That's simply.
That's a great point.
And the conversation is a lot, I mean, I, I know we talked about the restaurant example, right? The conversation is a lot easier for restaurants, you know? They can just build those costs into, you know, the food that they are selling. You know, we, you know, we're sort of at a disadvantage where we don't really have the luxury of being able to build that in to somewhere. And, and if we do, then it begs the question, perhaps we're making other people realize a portion of the cost for a payment method that they really have no interest in, that is for the benefit of the people that do. So it, it really is, it really is a difficult, it really is a difficult.
Did you have another comment?
I'm, I appreciate the thought that was put into this recommendation. And I'm, I'm in agreement that this is a very reasonable, measured approach that is, is fair and is not going to put undue work on the department and will help streamline services. And I appreciate that you will keep an eye on it next year as we move through and report back, whether it's budget season or midway through the year to continually assess where we are. I appreciate your approach in that manner.
The, the comment, one of the questions we asked, and this might be one of yours. We asked about, you know, we can only go based off of what our current online credit card is. We have absolutely no way to know how many people will come in and use credit card and how many people will sign up for ACH, right? So could there potentially in the future be a lower rate due to higher amounts coming in? That, that the answer is yes, we just have absolutely no, nothing to base it off of other than currently in 2023, we took in $1 million over the course of them. So again, you know, we said, you know, these rates, is there anything that we can have done? Sure, but we just need more data in order to, to be able to ask, go back and ask for different fees and rate structures for us. And what if, what if like 75% of people start either doing the ACH or that, you know, where we could potentially have lower?
Any other board comments on this matter? Do you have the, is the board in agreement with?
I mean, it's a user, it's like Jay, Commissioner Roth said, it's a user fee. Like if you're going to use your credit, it's a user.
Convenience fee. I like using that word. It is a convenience.
But I would still, I'd still like to see us find ways that for bills that people know that they're going to have to pay for, for the whole year to encourage them to pay it one time at the beginning of the year. We get our money, it's less processing on the backside. And I know it's short time, you don't have that time to do it now, but maybe as we go through 2025, we can look at this and refuse and figure out a way to, to accomplish that. So we just get one instead of spreading it out over for you.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, if, if we knew that this would be up and running, you know, before the first quarter refuse bill goes out, I'd be curious to see who would enroll and pay all four of those quarters at once, right? And they're realizing one $1.50 fee as opposed to four over the course of four quarters. But I think we won't know who would take advantage of paying all four quarters until the first quarter of, I'm sorry, until January of 2026. At that point, you know, obviously, if this is the direction that we're going, at that point, that would be the first, first quarter bill that they receive where we could gauge, would they do all four? And then that would probably make or break your point, right? You know, we'd probably learn a lot from that.
Do you have the direction you need from the board? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, that was fun. So then the last item here, as it relates to the water fund, is really just circling back and opening it up to any other questions that you guys might have with any of the projected revenues or forecasted expenses for water.
Are there any other questions on that one?
Anybody need a break? Want to take five, 10 minute break?
We'll take a brief five minute adjournment at this time.
This conference will now be recorded.
We are resuming our special meeting of the Board of Commissioners Budget Workshop, October 30th, 2024. After our short break, thank you for your patience. And I'll turn it back over to our Director of Finance, Tricia Dickert, to resume our meeting.
Thank you for that short break. So we'll move on to sewer fund. Sewer fund, we are forecasting the 2024 cash carry forward to be just over $1.9 million. South Whitehall Township is projecting $3.89 million in revenues for the year 2025, which is a 6% decrease over what was projected in 2024. Budgeted expenditures are decreasing slightly as well. They're projected at $3.89 million for the year 2025. And again, that's a decrease of 5% over 2024. So the revenue total for sewer being $3,895,914. And then the same in expenses leaves us flat, no surplus, no deficit. Important to note here, LCA is raising the sewer rates by 4.7% in 2025. And there is a proposed 4% sewer rate increase to be passed on to South Whitehall Township residents for 2025. This 4% is based on the sewer rate study that has been conducted in the year 2024. This puts our fund balance at 5.23 million as of the end of 2024, which is less than, less than the $10 million required by the fund balance policy. Keeping in mind that that $10 million requirement was built into the fund balance policy specifically due to the Klein's Island expansion. To date, the interest earned on the sewer fiscal stability monies at the rate of 5% is $131,579.86. In speaking to the cash carry forward, the sewer budget is structured to build the fund balance to prepare for that Klein's Island expansion as well as any additional future capital infrastructure expenses. This includes unspent carry forward from prior years with the recommendation from the rate study and LCA's 2025 suggested, I'm sorry, the 2025 rate increases. It's, you know, we, we sort of feel it's imperative to pass 4% of that on to the residents. Again, that was the recommended amount in the rate study. For 2025, what would that look like? That would, that 4% increase would increase from $87.50 per EDU per quarter to $91. Metered sewer would go from $4.79 per 1,000 gallons to $4.98 per 1,000 gallons. And the base charge per quarter would increase from $35 to $36. The sewer fund question that was received was as it relates to engineering, having increased from $65,000 to $125,000. And the request was for the administration to provide additional details. The details provided is that the increase is due to the SR 309 interchange project, which is subject to a cost share with reimbursement at the end of the project and a payment required for engineering work as it relates to the Klein's Island ongoing Act 537 project. So if you take a look at memo number two, which is again on the right side of your file folder, it just summarizes what that rate increase would look like on an average bill.
Just a question. You said the sewer base charge is $36 here on the overhead, on the handout, it's $36.40.
Yeah, when they explained it in the public meeting, the people who did the rate study based it at $36. That's why we left it at $36.
This is, should be $36.
Yes. If you use the graph at the bottom, it does say 36. And that's what was explained in the public meeting, so that's why we followed that, just in case there was any residents that were listening to it.
So it's, it's a dollar increase, which is less than 4%.
Correct, on the base charge, yes.
So to open it for discussion, and, and I'm just throwing this out there and you can rip it as you want. The base charge they can't do anything about, the volumetric charge they can. So if we increase it to 5% to, for those folks that use it, right, they're going to have to pay more. And would that encourage people to conserve water and to lower their rate? Because if you, if it goes by volume, if we increase it to 5%, would that encourage people to use less water and use less, which is therefore they would be able to lower their rate, is all I'm asking, is just.
So basically passing on any increases through the volumetric as opposed to the base charge?
Correct.
Is, is that enough of a meaningful enough change though, to, to effectuate an effective rate decrease? Is that, is that what you're, like, you're, are you saying that basically?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I'm just trying to say is, you know, if we want to, how can we encourage people to conserve water or use more, like fill your dishwasher, fill your washing machine, et cetera, et cetera, all the stuff that, you know, they say.
Which in turn would lower our expenses with LCA?
I can just tell you, Chris, when we had the almost 8% increases, what was it, two years ago, I believe, 11% it was? They did not lower their water usage.
That may be more of a function of, for example, the Environmental Advisory Council through education to the general public about the overall benefits of.
Going to be part of, with the ongoing drought. So there are some things posted, how to conserve water. But with the new lead and copper, we have to do a lot of public outreach for this also. So that is going to be one of the topics we talk about. Because if you conserve the water, we don't have to take as much from LCA and our wells don't run as hard. Along if you're on a well, how you can conserve water that way also.
I know at our, a couple of our recent events, Mike Elias was there with his stormwater runoff. I know at our, a couple of our recent events, Mike Elias was there with his stormwater runoff map that I think a lot of kids were very engaged in. Is that something we could do more outreach at our events also to just really begin to help put this in front of people?
We were doing, we are required by our permit to do four a year. This year, we did a total of eight of them. We are not at every event due to sometimes Mike's not around or the MS4 guys are tied up with other commitments with their families and that. But we are trying to get to as many as we can. The night ones don't really work too well for us with the water table and showing it's very hard to see. But yes, we are trying to put our best effort forward with getting to more than just the four that we are required a year to do.
Yeah, I've seen that. And I think it's been wonderful to engage with the community to help educate.
Thank you.
Chris, I, I appreciate your question, but, and I thank staff for the response. We had a significant sewer rate, water rate increase. We didn't see any changes, so I.
Yes. And the other thing is, I know yous are looking at, we're proposing 4%. The city of Allentown is proposed a 4.7, but there's more than what just looks at a 4%, 4.7%. There's also an O and M cost that we, a percentage we have to pay as operating and maintenance because we send all our sewage down there. Next year, those rates are lower for us. So when you look at all of it together, a 4% increase is where we should be. Could we charge more? We could probably, knowing the inflation factor and everything like that. But 4% will balance the budget for us.
I just have a question building off of what Chris's suggestion is. If, and I might be completely wrong on this, and I just haven't had the chance to chart it out. If we were to pass on any, any increase in the cost through the volumetric charge as opposed to the base charge and residents don't conserve water usage, in fact, they continue to use more water, would we generate additional revenue beyond?
Yes. Well, yes and no. The issue, some of the issue is, is the amount of water that gets sent to Klein's Island is not all sewage. But it does get through our sewer meters due to the INI, which we all know there's a huge issue throughout the region with. That's why we're in the corrective action plan. So to sit here and say, would they, would we see a decrease? I can't give you that answer till we solve the INI problem regionally.
So the, the fund balance, you said, is that 10 million? I can't.
It's supposed to be at 10 million, yes.
It's not.
No, it's a, just like 5.1, I believe she said it was.
5.23.
5.23, sorry.
And we don't have no, and there's no surplus in the budget. So we can't even grow.
Well, this year's budget said there was no surplus again, but the the cash carry forward is looking to be 1.9. Yep, which is.
So that'll build up the fund to.
Well, that is part of the 5.2 there already.
Yeah, you're full of good news.
Well, this is our third budget cycle with the sewer stability fund. So we're, I think we're making good progress. I, I know it looks like we're not at our goal yet, but we started with zero. So we've made significant progress. Well, yes, but since we started with zero.
I, I don't want to raise rates any more than anybody else does, but looking down, down the road, not having, you know, is 4% going to be enough?
The answer is probably no. So that's why the rate study recommends 4% each year. And we're going to monitor that next year to see if that is even a feasible number, if it needs to be higher. But it, but it recommended 4% for the next 10 years.
No, yeah, I know. I remember the study and, and you're hoping some of the new construction comes online, but the, the major construction that at Ridge Farms doesn't seem to be going to help increase the funding.
We'll say with the Klein's Island Act 537 plan that they are shifting the first, the next five years more into just the pure INI work. So you're not going to see as many of the other projects that they were originally proposing. So they have cut the overall costs in half. But I mean, well, you know, I say that with, with a, with extreme caution and a caveat that, that if the INI projects don't work, then those other projects will come back on the table.
Now, and speaking of INI, we talked about getting the reports of, now it hasn't rained in a while, but the reports of, is our INI project working? Because we shouldn't see those spikes during significant rainfall.
Well, I can tell you, since we did the last set of manhole linings and MS 54, M 56 down the trunk line, we have not gotten any alarms, which Tom loves when they go off at 2:00 in the morning. So we believe it is working, but it is very hard to tell. When we did have some of the rain earlier in the year, we did not get those alarms. Right now, our issue, our last alarm issue is 52. So we are going to concentrate on the trunk line of 52 next year to see if we stop getting alarms there. And then we will assess building out further in the low lying areas where we know manholes are right next to streams and some of them are in swales for the sewer and look at accomplishing getting those done to make sure we're getting our inflow problem along with our INI at the same time.
Sewer work and lining sewers and alarms is not glamorous work, but I am just really appreciative of your focus and, and forethought and planning in this area. So thank you for what you do.
Yes, and I have to give full credit to Mike Elias also. He puts a lot of time and effort into this along with the Public Works Department who is out cammering, finding these problems. If we have a major issue and we got to dig something, they're right there to dig it right away also. So it is a full team effort that goes into this department.
Thank you for that. And we're very grateful for the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is everybody? Okay, we're good?
Okay. So if there's nothing else for sewer, we'll move on to refuse. For refuse, in 2024, we're expecting a cash carry forward in the amount of $323,101. South Whitehall Township is projecting 5.09 million in revenues for 2025. This is a 1% increase over the year 2024. And budgeted expenditures are projected at 4.65 million, which is an increase of 2% over 2024. So the total revenues being projected is 5,95,440 and expenses of 4,651,046.88. The surplus being 444,393.12. Keeping in mind that there is no refuse rate increase being proposed as passed on to South Whitehall Township residents in 2025. Also, just a reminder that when the refuse rate was calculated, it was calculated off of the life of the contract. So, so the idea was we wouldn't be sitting in front of you for additional years, asking for a new rate increase each year. So what will happen over time is you'll slowly start to see that surplus wind down as the expenses increase in the later years and are gobbling up those beginning years that were all structured at the same rate. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. This puts our fund balance at 323,101 the end of 2024, which is 452,000 less than what's required by the fund balance policy. And again, I think I just said this out of order. The surplus is due to the first and second year period of the five-year contract in order to maintain one rate over the course of the contract. And again, we'll see this even out when we reach that fifth year. So I'd like to go to the last piece of supplemental information on the right side of your pocket, which is just a memo talking a little bit about the low income senior refuse discount that was rolled out first for the year 2024. So beginning with the calendar year 2024, the township began a low income senior refuse discount program. The purpose was to provide low income senior citizens with some relief on their township refuse bill. Qualified applicants could be approved for relief up to $30 per quarter, which was $120 in total for the year. To date, we've received 63 applications and those applications are broken down in the following way. Forty-nine applicants qualified and received the discount as a credit on their refuse account. Five of the applicants submitted incomplete applications. Those applicants were contacted for supplemental information. I've not yet heard back from them. I can reach out to them once more by the end of the year because December 31st is that cutoff date. So maybe what I'll do is I'll just encourage them one more time to get that information and so that we can hopefully approve their application. And then nine applicants were denied. Of those nine, six of them did not meet the age requirement and three of them did not meet the income requirement. The income thresholds that we used for 2024 were in line with the PACE program, which is the Commonwealth Pharmaceutical Assistance Program, where the maximum house, the maximum household income for a senior citizen single was 33,500 and for married, 41,500. For the 2025 low income senior refuse discount, we're actually requesting to increase the thresholds by 3.5%, which is 1% higher than the 2.5% that will be the Social Security's cost of living increase. That would have an impact of a single person then having to meet a threshold of 34,673 and combined married household income of 42,953. So the action being requested is discussing, discussion during tonight's budget workshop so that the new income threshold can be detailed in the resolution that we'll need to provide you all setting the refuse rate for 2025. I'll turn it over to all of you.
Thank you, Tricia. Very good information. I'm very, very pleased to see that some of our seniors are applying for and receiving a discount. I know that's something that this board has discussed for quite some time. So thank you. Are there any comments from the board? I'm absolutely in favor of moving forward with your recommendation to increase the.
I, I'd like to see it to 5%. I'd like to see if we could do more to help keep seniors in their homes. And I'm not sure if that's, that'll tear into the surplus, but I still think we'll still have a surplus. And I think it'll show, you know, we're doing everything we can and how would that affect?
Here's what I would suggest. If we do a 5%, we should monitor how that goes. And then if we hit our cap, then we close the program. Does that make sense? But what, yeah, once we hit that amount, we do the 5%, but once we hit that amount.
For the first 100 people? Is that what you said?
Essentially, yeah. Once we hit the, the dollar amount, once we.
What's the dollar amount?
It was based on 100 people for 2025.
Yeah.
We approximated 100 people being. If you want to make it 5% instead of 3%, the number that we built in to make the revenue, what it is for this year in order to cover the costs, we assumed that approximately 100 people would get that.
Well, I would hope we would keep it at 100 and still be at 5% and see what that looks at because.
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Well, but we're going to have less than 100 people enrolled if we go to 5% is what you're saying.
No, I'm saying adjust the numbers to still have the 100, but then cap it at that point, right? Like we can't just be open ended. That's all I was saying.
Oh, I thought you said you, at 3.5%, you have 100 people at 3.5% and you have a number. And then you're saying, once we hit that number, we cap it.
No, I'm saying, yes, I'm saying do the 5%, but increase the threshold to the 100 with the 5%. But then once it's done.
Right, okay.
We can't offer it anymore if there's more than 100.
Right, so the first 100, first come, first served.
We, we got to be careful here because the, I know it looks like the surplus is a big number, but we need that surplus for the fourth and fifth year as the price of the contract keeps going up.
Which is why we could only do 100 people. So we didn't put a cap when we were saying 3.5% because we don't believe there will be more than 100 people. But if we open it to 5%, Tom's saying that we do need to put the cap at 100.
And that's fine, right.
Exactly right.
I'm okay with doing it 5% for the first 100 people that apply. Do we encourage people to apply to help keep seniors? And then as we go through the bright light of the contract, because we also talked about, is there other things we can do to lower the cost of the contract by, like by doing the, the yard pickup ourselves? I mean, that was discussed at some point.
We're, yeah, that's all being looked at.
Correct. So what I'm saying, as we get to year four and five, there may be ways, or may not, but there may be ways for us to.
Yeah, you're 100% correct. I'm just taking it as of today. If we didn't change anything in the contract, we just have to make sure we're keeping the surpluses that were accounted for in the refuse account to offset not having a rate increase because the, the price of the bid just keeps going up.
To confirm, you're saying you can absorb the 5% at 100? Correct.
So, so if, it seems to me like all we would really need to do then is make sure that that is specifically written into the resolution when we set the rate for the 2025 refugee. Because if we leave it open ended, then we're going to have to accept it open ended. So we would need to write in there that, that the, the first qualified, the first qualified 100 applications would realize that discount up to, did I say that the right way? I think, you know what I'm saying? Okay.
Yeah, we're all saying the same thing, just in different ways.
And then after that cap, the program is just closed.
Get your paperwork in early.
So are you, oh, I'm sorry. Are you saying that it is open ended if we go along with the increase of 3.5%?
I don't believe that it will be. So, so, so what, what we know based on who applied for 2024 is only three of them were denied based on an income threshold, right? Now, I can tell you that the 3.5%, when I looked at how close they were or far away they were from those income thresholds, these three applicants would still not have qualified. What we don't know is how many people did not submit applications because they knew right away by looking at the criteria that they weren't going to meet that measure. I don't know what that number is from 3.5% to 5%. You know, is that, does that, does that give us a request in excess of 37? Which would tip us over that, well, not 37, 51, which would tip us over the, the the current number as approved applications at 49? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. But I think we also have to be careful because there was one particular situation where the resident had a two-unit property and they provided proof to us that they were not renting out that second unit. So the way it was written, it was $120 credit for the unit. So arguably, they were able to receive $240 as the credit. My fear is if that happens again, then our number isn't 100, our number is 99. So we just need to have, again, this was one nuanced situation. Maybe there's an opportunity to make that clearer in the resolution. I, I don't know. But I think, you know, you're right. Tom is right. If we go to a structure where it's 5%, but assuming there would be more, we can't accept any more than 100 qualified approved applicants, then yeah, it's get your paperwork in early.
See, that's where I have trouble. I hate to see it capped and have somebody who really still does have a need and they just missed the deadline.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think from day one, we knew, you know, we start with pace here, you know, we start with the pharmaceutical threshold here because we can say that we didn't come up with these figures all on our own, right? We based this off of a state program that's already offered. We knew we were going to reevaluate it come the end of 2024. Again, once we had that data from how the program was administered in 2024 to try and drive if there is any room to make changes for 2025. We could very well be in the same position next year going, okay, we still, you know, we increased that from 49 to maybe 75 and there's still room between that 75 and the 100. And then obviously that conversation would be probably to increase those thresholds again. You want to go, you know, to one place in, in one jump, you know, obviously, you know, that's, it's, it's a group decision, I think, at this point.
We understand like the concern is we don't want to turn anybody away. The, the unfortunate thing is, is that if we end up making it 5% and 300 applicants do it, we now are in a situation where we're going to have to raise the rate because we won't have enough money in the budget to cover all of those discounts. So 100 is the amount. So a hundred is the amount that we can feasibly take on with the money that's in the refuse fund. So if we start moving above that hundred, we're then on the other side of having to raise rates, which we've said we are trying to avoid. So just, I fully understand, just one side or the other, it's turning people away or that's the other option.
My personal preference would be to, at least at this point, stick with what you've, what you've proposed. Anecdotal, but I've spoken to a number of residents um, who thought about applying, um, and then didn't, once they, they found out that that's true and realized that they would not, um, meet, meet, but the, uh, the threshold. And, you know, they, they knew that it was, it was based on, on the PACE program, so the feedback from them was that they, they understood. Obviously, they would love to discount, but they understood this is a threshold that's largely determined. You know, it, it's fair, we can apply it pretty uniformly. Um, it's not sort of an arbitrary number that, that we've come up with, so I'd much rather stick with what you've proposed. Oh, if, if, and there's individuals who are maybe slightly out of that range and, and, you know, express concerns about that, we can always reevaluate this for the duration of the contract, but my preference would be to, to stick with the, um, the increase slightly above the, uh, just, to me, it's-
Well, you just, you, you just said they didn't apply because they didn't meet the threshold. How many other people are out there that are right near the threshold that don't meet it because they don't meet the PACE guidelines? Now, we're giving more people the opportunity to get the benefit that the other folks have and it's still not negatively impact our budget. So I think we should look, we should look to get more people into the, into the program to help them. Because it's, this is just the pace plus one percent, so the chances are those folks still aren't going to be able to, to, to apply because of that income threshold. By raising it a little bit higher, now we open the door to potentially get more people, to help more people stay within their homes or, or help them out with some of their bills.
I just want to confirm if we were to go to five percent cap it at a hundred, that is a number that is built in that would not-
When I did the calculation originally, when we had originally started this with the figuring out the one sixty-five, when Tom and I were talking about it, the one hundred was the number we were using.
Okay.
That I could work into it.
Sustainable for the whole life of the contract, yes.
No data or idea of, of how many eligible residents. How many individual residents are eligible now versus under five percent if it were a-
Uh, there's some really high-level data available through the census, right? So there's approximately seven hundred people, I believe, in, living in poverty levels in the township. So that's the federal guidelines for poverty, which is actually below the PACE guidelines. So of that, there's probably like six point five percent of people that are over sixty-five. So these are just, I'm just, you know, this isn't statistical quantitative study I'm doing here, but, um, it would be somewhere between one hundred to three hundred, I think, total. That would, that would, um, if you, like, that, that could potentially be eligible. So, but we're only seeing, at this point, we only saw, uh, uh, you know, fifty people make use of it this year. So then the hundred number is probably spot on. Um, it's just this, to, as Kristen alluded to, it's, it's kinda, and Tricia, if you, once you start pushing too far, you might get to a point where a thousand people qualify. And we just simply haven't budgeted for that. Um, I understand where you're coming from and wanting to help as many as people as we can. It's just then, that will then cause us to have to raise rates for others.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. If you want to, I'm okay with capping at a hundred because I don't, but just throw, we just want a little bigger net out to get to that hundred is, is what I'm trying to see if we can do.
The caution is that next budget season, we don't bump it up by another significant amount.
Yeah, well, see, well, next year we-
Bump it up higher as long as you cap it. That's the whole thing. Um, once you, if you start putting yourself more in like the closer to the forty thousand dollar threshold for, for a single family, or I'm sorry, for an individual and then like closer to fifty thousand for a family, I think you're gonna start to see, like, probably a thousand applicants.
The data, the eligibility at that income threshold might skyrocket.
Abroad.
Skyrocket, yes. So it's, it's a really close threshold based, I just, like, looking at the cursory levels of, of the census data, that's what we're trying to balance.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, I think it's important to note, like, we do want people in this program, right? Like, we do want people taking advantage of this discount. This is the whole reason, that's the whole reason it was thought out this way. It's the whole reason it was structured. I think, uh, you know, the, the three-point, the three point five concept was it's still three point five percent higher than PACE because to our knowledge, PACE has not increased their wage threshold for 2025 and it's one percent higher than the two point five cost of living that social security is expecting. So I, I think the thought process was three point five and then if we see that that only brought in an additional twenty-five applicants, uh, better to increase it for twenty-six until, until we have enough data to get us, you know, as, as close as possible to that cap. But again, I, I completely, uh, understand, uh, both the desire to increase it to five percent, but cap it at a hundred or a hundred units, whatever we want to call it, uh, versus the, uh, you know, the, the reality that we could end up turning people away. I understand both of those, uh, trains of thought.
So could there be a compromise at four percent?
Yeah, all I'm looking is to get more people involved.
Yeah, I, I think we all understand that.
Five percent. It's, it's not a major difference between three and a half and five. I think we can, we can do it.
I think we should, we'll go with five and we'll, we'll just, we'll closely track it.
And cap it at a hundred.
Okay, we'll closely track it through.
And we can also monitor the funds if some items are coming in under, which they might, but I mean, that is, that is a very fixed budget because it's all contractual. Um, but we can, we can always monitor and just see where we're at and report back if we get another influx.
The, the piece to remember is when Tom and I talked about helping to figure out how we could afford to pay for the senior discount is we were using monies that are coming from the, the, the late payments, right? So potentially, sure, if more people pay late, then we have more money going into the pot, right? So like, it's like this offset balance. So when Tom and I came up with this hundred number and how we get the money for that, it's, it's this constantly fluctuating. So like, we can all sit here and say one hundred, but let's all face it, if two more people come in that are so close to this, we're not gonna tell you guys, don't, don't give two more. We just base the hundred off of what we know is in the budget to afford without.
I mean, and-
Well, well stated, yeah.
And honestly, in speaking to the way that this was thought up and the way that this was funded, for lack of a better word, you know, also keep in mind, we're going down this ACH payment route, which we're hoping will turn into less late fees on people for paying late bills, which also potentially decreases the amount of late fees that we receive, which was to offset the cost of this program. Again, I, uh, I support either way. It, it doesn't really matter to me, just, uh, just looking for, you know, just looking for direction.
So I, I've shared my concerns, um, going to five percent, but if that's the direction, the way the board wants to go, I, that's fine with me. And, and I think another thing to consider, the, the more that I think about it actually is, and just sort of the, some of the nonspecific numbers that Tom shared regarding eligible individuals in the community. I mean, if we have, there are six or seven hundred individuals, you know, at, at or below poverty, the, the federal poverty level, um, and we only got forty-nine, you know, successful qualified applicants, um, most probably came in around the beginning of, of, or end of last year, beginning of this current year, when we had just gone through the, you know, incredibly strenuous process of, of having to, to find a new trash contract at a time when, when most, if not all, the township was well on alert that, you know, trash fees were getting increasing and would have a, a greater incentive to apply to a program or explore a program like this, and yet we only received, you know, what would that be, like, shortly, you know, above sixty applications? Then yeah, I, I guess, you know, now we're in a time when, I mean, most people have probably been forced to build, you know, the, the added refuse costs into their, their family budgets. Um, so there's, there's maybe a chance we'd, we'd see a spike in applications. Maybe not, at the very least, if, if we raise it to five percent and even if just those three people that didn't meet the income requirement are able to be included, that's, or the, the five others that submitted incomplete applications, we raise it to five percent. You know, and, and even if we're just able to help eight households with the discount, that's an added benefit and, and we're still not exceeding the cost. So the more I think about it, we can make five percent work. Fine with me.
I just want to add one comment. Thank you, Jacob. Um, the word surplus is a little bit misleading here. I almost, in my mind, are thinking, um, almost a cash carry forward to fulfill the contract. It's really not a surplus. It is not money that we have left over in this fund that is not designated to go somewhere. And I think that-
Across the term of the contract.
Correct. When we hear surplus, we think-
Yeah.
Expendable cash, but it's not.
In this case, it's not.
We don't make money, we don't make money on the trash contract, period, yeah. No, we just cover our costs.
Correct. Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thank you. So we're in agreement, Tommy? Did you? Okay, very good.
In agreement.
Five percent, one hundred cap.
Five hundred, five hundred-
With a cap of a hundred units.
Five percent with a one hundred cap as provided for currently in the budget.
Thank you, yes.
But to be confirmed on the, uh, resolution.
Yes, okay. Okay. Uh, so beyond the low-income senior refuse discount, uh, I, I don't have that any questions were submitted as it related to the refuse fund and the expected revenues, uh, or the expenses. So if there are any questions, we can certainly entertain those now. So moving on to emergency management fund. So with emergency management fund, there was just, uh, one question submitted and it was, uh, relative to the, uh, radio, the EMS radio fund. Uh, if the township were to proceed with the buyback no-interest program from the Lehigh County, would these accumulated funds be utilized to pay the county? Uh, the response to that is these funds could be used to pay the county in the buyback no-interest scenario for emergency management services radios or the funds could be utilized to pay a lump sum amount for the necessary emergency management services radios. Any additional questions on that? Hi, moving on to state highway aid. Uh, for 2025, the township is projecting seven hundred eighteen five ninety-nine in revenues, which is a one percent decrease over 2024 and expenses in the amount of six seventy-six nine seventeen, uh, which is a decrease of sixteen percent over 2024, uh, leaving a surplus of forty-one thousand six eighty-two. The forecasted 2024 cash carry forward being four thirty-five, four fifty-two, twenty-three. And with that information, if there's any questions as it relates to state highway aid, uh, now would probably be the best time to discuss it. Any board questions? So the open space fund, uh, the township is projecting forty-five point six thousand in revenues for 2025 and that's a fifty-five percent decrease over the year 2024. Budgeted expenditures are projected at two hundred fourteen thousand, which is the same amount from 2024 because of carrying over the Vista's project from the year 2024 into the year 2025. So again, that's revenues totaling forty-five thousand six thirty-five seventy-five, expenses totaling two fourteen oh thirty-four, uh, which leaves us at a deficit in open space fund in the amount of one sixty-eight, three ninety-eight, twenty-five. For 2024, the expected cash carry forward is four forty-two, seven forty-one. So you can see that cash carry forward, uh, essentially gobbles up that deficit in the open space fund.
What's the open space fund?
It's all of the, um, combined revenues received from development projects at this point. So, uh, when-
They have to put forward to like playgrounds and stuff within development?
Fees in lieu, fees in lieu of development.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, so ARPA currently has, uh, one million five hundred sixty-six thousand five forty seventy-one remaining in funds, uh, to be used. Uh, of that, one million dollars has already been set aside and appropriated uh, towards replacing an existing aerial truck that's reached the end of its useful life uh, and serves the entire township. The interest has been received, the interest that has been received for the ARPA monies has also been earmarked uh, to cover any additional costs that may be incurred for the truck purchase from the original cost allocation in 2023. That leaves the remaining ARPA funds still to be encumbered by the police department due to the body cameras coming in well below the anticipated cost. Does anybody have any questions on ARPA funds? Any board questions?
We'll be coming to the board in the next couple meetings, um, uh, not the next meeting, board, board meeting, but, uh, probably the following meeting to encumber the rest of the funds.
They need to be encumbered by the end of this year.
Yes.
Correct. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, debt service fund. Uh, the total of debt payments for 2025 will be one million fifty-seven thousand five hundred. Of that, six eighty-five, six hundred eighty-five thousand is principal and three hundred seventy-two thousand is interest. Uh, below, we've just broken down by fund, uh, for the 2025 bond payment. Uh, you'll see for water, that makes the interest payment twenty-four thousand oh seventy-three. The principal payment one sixty-three oh thirty-one for a total of one eighty-seven one oh four. And for general fund, the total of eight seventy-three ninety-six, broken down as principal five twenty-one nine sixty-nine and interest three forty-eight four twenty-seven. Any questions on debt service?
No. Any board questions?
Nope. Okay. Uh, for your capital request packet, uh, in 2025, uh, there are a total of three million sixty-seven thousand three hundred fifty-eight uh, worth of capital requests that have been submitted for review and consideration. Uh, when capital requests are submitted, the funding sources for those requests come from several places. Comes from grants, inter-fund transfers and the cash carry forward for the capital fund. We identify the 2025 capital funding sources as follows. Two hundred eighty-five thousand nine sixty-six in grant revenue, ten thousand dollars in requested donations for canine purchase, two hundred fourteen oh thirty-four in inter-fund transfer from the open space fund. And I need to correct the number that you have in front of you. Uh, the one three one three three eight four should be one million five twenty-seven four eighteen seventy. And that's the expected inter-fund transfer from the general fund to cover the cost of all of the capital projects should the board decide to move forward with all of the capital projects. So in speaking to those contributing sources, uh, for capital cash carry forward, it's important to point out that the 2024 capital cash carry forward is, uh, forecasted to be one million twenty-nine thousand nine thirty-nine twenty-eight. And again, just a reminder on, uh, how cash carry forward, uh, how that number, the contributing factors to that number. It's unspent cash carry forward from years prior. It's projects coming in under budget, projects being done cheaper in-house, uh, HERBS cost-sharing agreements for paving and then the sale of fixed assets. We received a few ca- questions as they relate to capital. Uh, so we'll go through all of those before we open it up for discussion on capital projects as a whole. The first question was, uh, will expenses including fuel, maintenance, insurance, housing, et cetera, be shared equally between the two municipalities? This is for the capital request that is the dozer. Uh, the response was yes. If this capital request would be approved, it would be subject to an inter-municipal agreement between the two entities that- it would be subject to an intermunicipal agreement between the two entities that memorialize costs for insurance, short-term and long-term maintenance and repairs, among others. The agreement would need to be approved by resolution of the Board of Commissioners. Were there any additional questions on the question that was asked as it relates to the dozer?
I did have one question. The estimated project cost to the township for this request was $100,000. Will Salisbury Township also be contributing $100,000 to purchase? Is this going to be a jointly owned piece of equipment?
Yes.
Purchase.
Yes, it will be whatever the the cost comes out to be. It'll be a 50-50 split right down the middle, down to the exact penny.
Very good. Thank you.
And the way we structure repairs, like say, for example, the, you know, the South Whitehall has has the machine in its possession and it needs a larger repair. The way you can structure it is that whoever has the machine when the when the repair goes down, essentially you're responsible for day-to-day maintenance items. But then larger items, like you say, you set a threshold, say it's over $1,000, then you would split them evenly. But day-to-day items like belts and stuff like that, you don't want to have to stop the operation of the machine, right? You would just you would just take it while you have it. But larger, more more cumbersome repairs would and replacements would be would be handled set forth wherever you would split it down the line.
Yeah. And the other thing is both municipalities, both have mechanics that have worked on dozers in the past. So each side would be equally knowledgeable. If we have it, something happens, we could reach out to them if we were stumped a little. Same thing with them. It could go back and forth.
Certainly sounds like a win-win.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
And since it's shared, will you be aware of any maintenance that will go on in Salisbury and vice versa? Like, will you keep that open communication? We did this to it. It needed this under our care, so forth.
Yeah, we'll keep.
Yeah, we're gonna work on keeping the work orders. So we would keep a copy here of ours and send them one. Same thing Salisbury said they would send up, keep a copy, send us a copy. So this way we all know that the maintenance is being done properly. So everyone would have a work order set up and everyone would see what's done.
And that would be required in the agreement.
Very good.
Okay. Moving on to the next question as it relates to page 76, the capital request specifically for the Public Works Ford Explorer. The question raised was, have the mechanical issues and complaints with the present fleet of explorers been considered when choosing this vehicle? Have the newer explorers been less problematic? So the the answer is yes. The primary issues with the fleet of explorers were the 2020/2021 range. The Explorer is sufficient for the identified operational needs of Public Works General Services Manager Matt Miller.
So let me just get to that page because I did have notes. So which, so we're basically getting a new Ford and then we're kind of pushing other cars down and one gets kicked off the.
Yeah, currently, right now, the car he has is a Ford Fusion. So it's very difficult to get around when it snows. So that Ford Fusion is actually in pretty decent shape yet. So that will come up here to one of the three vehicles that the the upstairs uses and get rid of car number three, which has rusting issues and everything. So it will stay in the fleet, but a different car will come out. We're not looking to expand it at all.
That's why I just. I just want to make sure because this car three would be replaced, but then the car would be used for when employees, I don't know if that was car three would be used, but you're getting rid of car three and you're getting a new Explorer.
Any other questions?
Okay. Okay. The next capital question is the capital request that's page 90, which is the sewer meters for the Public Works Department. The question is, as this is an ongoing project, will the same amount be consistently budgeted in each consecutive year? And the response was the amount may need to be increased in future years depending on the actual results of the SRP as confirmed by the Township, LCA, and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. But the 350,000 amount is the floor baseline amount to be budgeted. Do I have this wrong? I was on the wrong one. This is for the sewer reduction plan project. Sorry, I think I said that as sewer meters.
Are there any board questions?
Thirty thousand dollars for the water meters is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I was on the wrong page. I was on the page that is Public Works Sewer Meters for 122,971. I should have been on the Public Works Sewer Reduction Plan Project of 350,000.
It's not there.
It's, remember, these didn't print with page numbers. Yeah.
Do you have it, Chris?
I'm just getting to the right page.
I was gonna say, I'll bring my copy up to you if you need it.
This one?
It's toward the back. It's like.
40322? Item number?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Were there any other questions as it relates to the sewer reduction plan project capital request? No? Okay. The next question was concerning the Vista's Park project. The question was, the Vista's Park projected cost of 530,000 will be offset by two grants. Will open space funds be utilized for the remaining balance? And the response to that, the budget as proposed provides an interfund transfer from open space fund to the capital reserve fund in the amount of 214,000,034 for the Vista's Park project. This was the same amount that was plugged into the 2024 budget as an interfund transfer. So that is being shifted from 2024 to 2025.
I just want to clarify that we did increase that project cost by $30,000 from 24 to 25 because we have a more robust planting plan. So that additional 30,000 is actually coming out of carryover funds, not the open space fund. Just wanted additional point of clarification.
Any questions?
The next question is a question on whether plans for the mill house routine maintenance to prevent further deterioration. I believe the question is, is there a capital request for that? And the response was the proposed budget as drafted does not currently provide for funds to conduct regular maintenance activities at the mill house. However, funds are provided for in the in the event that repairs need to be made. The example given was observed issues that may occur from time to time.
So wouldn't it be more cost effective if we do routine maintenance to prevent? I won't say catastrophic, but you know, you keep an eye on the roof or replace shingles as routine maintenance versus waiting for the roof to leak.
Yeah, the roof, the roof, the roof is two years old, the windows.
I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, the windows are eight years old. The outside, our next step is some of the lighting isn't as good. So we are looking at possibly upgrading the lights by the doors next year. So it is lit up at night. It's not dark. And then one of the big things we have to concentrate on then is the back porch area.
Do we, do we, and our planners aren't here. Do we have the history of that house?
From what I understand, and maybe Tom knows more than I know about it. I don't know if it's on the historical map. I understand the people who ran the mill used to live in that house. I think what the historical part of that house was, was them just living there. The mill was actually the historic part of it.
Right, but the mill dates back to the, if I'm not mistaken, 1860s-ish, 1870s. So the house would have been built over 100 years ago. I'm afraid to ask the planners because they're gonna end up doing a study. But could we, you know, is there a way to, you know, because people walk.
I have.
People walk by there. Can we put a plaque there or something and say, hey, this is the mill house?
It is being looked at as part of the historical plan. So it is being planned as we speak.
Being studied.
I know. And I do have full plans done, ready to go if it is the temperature of the board that we want to move that house forward. But to totally renovate it, we're gonna be 400,000 to 500,000 once we get into all the work with contractors.
Yeah, I just like to, as people walk by there, the history of that region of the township. Is there an easy way that we can just start to highlight some of those things in a plaque or something?
I think a year, maybe a year ago, a little more, I had suggested one of our plans or programs that that be specifically included in the historic resources inventory, which is hopefully going to lead to signage, things like that. So I'll double check on that, but I was, I know it was a specific request that I had. Yeah, it's it's being worked on. Yeah.
Thank you.
But yeah, if that's, we want to put a sign there while we're doing the lighting, we can put the light in right away. Hang the side because the trail does walk right by the corner of that house now. We could mount it on that side right there.
There's a nice limestone kiln down the trail on the opposite side where a sign could go and explain what a lot. What is, you know, people walk by, what is this pile of rocks? And they could explain what it is. You know, there's just such an opportunity to enlighten our visitors to the park of the historical value along that valley.
And maybe, and I understand the cost, but maybe we start at least thinking about long-term plans for the mill house. Maybe it's a conversation.
Yeah.
I understand it's it's a huge.
I just don't want to see us incur a bigger cost.
No, 100%.
We're not doing routine maintenance and then we lose the value of the house because we see some of the other historical structures deteriorating due to lack of maintenance. And then they wait till they have a big issue. It's something that's in our inventory that we're responsible for. We're pushing for historical preservation. We're kind of not setting a good standard if we, you know, wait for a catastrophic issue. That's what I'm concerned about. And if the roof's done, the window's done, and you're confident, then obviously I'd go with you. But that's just my concern.
Dave Kennedy started working on that. So as long as we know that it's in the plan to go forward.
Yeah, I have the full plans.
Yeah.
The new person that Dave was working with, they are not interested in doing it. So that's why I'm saying the price tag of the 400,000 to the 500,000 to fully renovate it because we would have to pay all contractors to do it. I mean, it's something we could look at if we want Public Works to do, but that along with all the other stuff we have, we can do it. It might just take five, six years to get it all done. And that could be a way that we could fit it into the budget if we stretch it out over a couple of years. So yeah, I think this is a much bigger conversation. But yes, the routine maintenance, so we're not losing it, we are keeping an eye on it.
I appreciate your comment about potentially doing it over a series of years. To Chris's point, I agree with you. It is a township landmark, whether it was part of the actual mill or not. And it is property of the township and we do want to preserve and maintain certainly an old building. It's got worth. And I certainly would be in favor of seeing us at some point in the future, beginning to make progress on getting to the goal of having it be restored. Whatever, you know, usefulness it might have for the township.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The second to last question that was submitted for capital requests was as it relates to police vehicles. The comment and question is as follows. Thank you for including the department's fleet management plan for the next few years. Would it be possible to obtain a current inventory of all police vehicles? Additionally, have we considered whether it would be feasible to avoid having to replace three to four vehicles every year and possibly two to three? Just curious about what factors into the consistent request of three to four vehicles. Tom had responded that we would provide the information and I believe that was, that information was sent subsequently.
Yeah, there was a full inventory with the with the updated fleet replacement plan provided.
And Monica, if I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm done.
If I'm not mistaken, you had asked that that be printed and added to the packet. So you should, you should have that inside of your packet now.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, my only comment would be I was the one that submitted that question. Thank you, Tom, for the information. Any further discussions about fleet plan overall? What we might want to look at in terms of less or more vehicles per year? I'm fine with sort of delaying that. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can get into it or. This budget, I think, I'm fine with that, but that's something we don't want to do. Okay, thank you.
The only, the only thing I would have to say is, to be honest with you, you know, four patrol vehicle or three patrol vehicles, not including the supervised vehicles. Sometimes I think that's a little, little light considering they're being used approximately eight hours a day, depend, you know, shift work. And I was in a municipality, worked in a municipality where they were, their police cars, where they ran in the ground because they shortchanged them in the short term and in the long term caused more problems because they didn't have a robust enough replacement plan. So, you know, if the police are requesting three, I just, you know, I don't want to see us get into that position where you know, we, the short-term gain causes long-term problems.
Yeah, that was sort of the the basis underlying my concern is maybe we have a separate discussion at some point about, you know, what what potential larger investments we have to make in that, you know, in terms of what the long-term needs are. What, what's the expected life of all these vehicles? That way we're not in any way shortchanging or or deferring the replacement of of vehicles that really, really need some, some work or outright replacement. Yeah, the the overall strategy behind this replacement plan is basically to make sure that we're not exceeding five years and a thousand, 100,000 miles for the frontline patrol vehicles. So that's where the four, you know, the three to four is coming each year. You know, we can look at, you know, like the, some of the ancillary vehicles and so forth and see, make sure, to your point, that we're adequately, adequately providing for the vehicles or or do we have enough or not, you know, too many, you know, we can definitely. I know a concern that was raised probably well over a year ago was concerns about some of the technological challenges in the aging fleet for SROs. Right. Detectives, they had been using some of the older vehicles, you know, if, if their vehicles aren't adequate and they never have to be called into service or those officers, you know, had in an emergency situation had to use them and there were issues, I just want to make sure that, you know, as many as possible of the police fleet vehicles are sort of up to date and we're not, you know, unfairly deferring maintenance on our detectives vehicles or SRO. Yeah, I think we've made a lot of progress. We've obtained grant funding. We will probably be coming to the board for an ARPA request for one more this year. We've had, you know, considerable amount of vehicles ordered this year. I think we've definitely made a lot of, a lot of significant progress to eliminating some of the, some of the issues that we did see previously. So I think we, you know, we're staying the course in terms of, you know, adhering to the, to the plan as, as, as originally developed, I think, a few years ago. But yeah, I mean, we could certainly review more in depth and make sure that we're providing for everything that we need.
We've gotten rid of the more problematic vehicles or in the process of doing.
We're in the, yeah, some of the vehicles we ordered this year haven't come in yet. So, you know, we are going to have on the next agenda for the surplus vehicles on municipal that we can get rid of now. And then, you know, as more come in, as noted in the fleet replacement plan, we'll get rid of more. So, yeah, I think, you know, right now, we're, we're in a pretty good position, especially with all the, once all the vehicles we've ordered actually arrive from, from 24. But, you know, I do think we because of some of the delays in the orders, you know, it's always, we're always playing catch up a little bit. So. But yeah, I think we're in a much better position than we were even a year ago.
Absolutely.
And the one other thing we're looking at, me and Tom have talked about it a lot, is if we replace these police vehicles when they shouldn't be on the police force, that doesn't mean that we still cannot use them. So that means like administration, public works. The three vehicles that are up here start swapping the police cars out with some of those that are still in decent shape where we could extend the life for another five years because we're not running them on a 12-hour shift every single day. So we're, we're looking at that aspect of also in the replacement plan for PDS vehicles.
Great information. Thank you.
So the, I mean, the ones that say NA under municipal, so the unit 302. the replacement's going to be it's the Ford interceptors transferring to specialty and no cars being taken out of the fleet then?
Place where?
This one. So I, what's the end? The NA, it looks like we're in 2025, we're, we're going to expand the fleet by two because we're going to bring four in, but only send two out.
So the reason for that is some of the K9, my understanding is the K9, there's a supervisor K9, which, or there's two supervisor Canines, which in the future, they, they're, they would need separate, separate supervisor vehicles. So that, that is my understanding is, as doing, due to the retirement of, of Canines.
That is just a misprint, Chris. The 302 unit, that should say SRO. So that'll come down to one of the SRO cars that are proposed here. And to municipal after the transfer of 303 and 304, it, you have to follow multiple steps to where.
I'm looking at this simplified one.
Yeah.
The next page has.
Yeah, I, I saw the next page. It was very busy.
Yes. But if you read all which ones move, they're bringing in and they're transferring some of them that are on the frontline to SRO, some to a different division that aren't used as much to get a longer life out of them and then putting the new one on the frontline. But when you look at it, it, I don't believe it does add anymore, if I read it correctly.
No, it just looks like it because of the supervisor vehicles, which they, because Canines are take home and the supervisor vehicles aren't.
Any other questions?
Okay. So the last question that was submitted in, in revan, in advance was related to two capital requests for Public Works. The pole barn and Brickyard Road demolition. The question was, would it be possible to have Public Works do any part of these projects to lessen the costs? The example given was site preparation. The response was with respect to the pole barn, Public Works is completing the portions of the project that are able to be conducted in terms of site preparation and utility connections. Public Works does not have the capacity to take on any portion of the Brickyard Road demolition project. Are there any follow-up questions to the response given as it relates to those two capital requests?
So I have, I have two pole barns here. 06431003 and 3043003.
Because it's split between two funds, one for 550 and then the other one for 150.
Okay, perfect. I take it these are going to be like heated?
Yeah, so.
For the expected equipment that you have?
This, what this is actually going to do is move some of the vehicles that are currently housed in that bay down to the new pole barn. And then we're going to put the water storage stuff down there also. And this way we can get the $250,000 dump trucks inside instead of sitting outside year round.
But take it'll be a heated and stuff.
Yes, it will be heated. The quote we got right now, 600,000 plus or minus, once we bid it. That does not include the prices for the worksite prep site, site restoration, final grading or seeding, electrical plumbing or HVAC. Public Works will take all those aspects on to make sure that is done inside with the workforce we currently have.
Is this the same pole barn that was supposed to be included in the reno and then it just never happened?
This one, it, it, it was, we made this one bigger, so we have enough room. Currently, right now, down at shop two, all the parks and rec, not parks and rec, the parks department has all their mowers down there. So every morning they have to come here, punch in, get their orders, go down there in a truck, get out of the truck, load the mowers, get back in their truck after they hook a trailer up and then go. With this pole barn, we will eliminate that whole process. The parks department will be coming back to this building. And then we will move the wood shop down to shop two and use that for our storage for the seasonal equipment then. So like in the winter, the jet trucks and the sweepers will go down there and be stored inside. And then the winter stuff would come up to the township building. But we would have ample space here to be able to house all the departments right back here.
I'm happy to see this finally come to fruition and I'm hoping, well, it will. It will increase the longevity of, of those vehicles because it'll be.
Yes, it will. The, the biggest issue we have is where they sit, they're right in front of the salt ship. So that salt is very corrosive. So we're thinking instead of being on a 10 to 12-year, we could easily get to a 15, possibly 20-year life with these dump trucks.
Fantastic. Is the gate included?
The gate.
We'll have to have a gate on it.
No, my guys, I'll just, no, we'll leave the gate on.
I, I concur, Monica, with your comment. I, I remember this being part of the original renovation.
Yes.
Design and I'm very happy to see it moving forward.
And those homes on Brickyard, I guess they're, it's unsalvageable. There, there's nothing there worth keeping.
Honestly, there's, there's nothing there. We did the, we had the abatement done already. So there's no asbestos. I did work with a, not a demolition company. They, they do demolition, but they also do excavating work for us. That's how I came up with that number. That is for them to haul, to tear it down, put it in the dumpsters, get it hauled away. If we do it, we're going to have to pay someone to haul it, bring the dumpster back. It's going to become a lot more expensive that way. Let them tear them down, get rid of it. And then Public Works will fill the holes in, grade it off, plant the grass seed, and then we just mow it.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Okay. So having gone through all of the questions that were submitted in, in advance for capital requests, I think it's just a good opportunity to have any conversation relative to any of the individual capital requests that any of you might have residual questions about.
I do not, I submitted mine all in advance. Does anyone else have any?
I, I have one or two. Tom, the Canines, we have two now or I know there was talk about.
Now we, we have one now.
So the budget has to increase to two and then the next year will be increased to three?
There will be, no, no. So we'll, we have one that's retiring now.
Right.
So we have one currently now. And then we will look to have another one ordered by June or July or have it somewhere around there, or June, July or August. So there'll be a slight overlap and then the other canine Drax is supposedly retiring as well. So we'll be back down to one by the end of the year.
Okay.
So there'll be a new one and Drax at one time.
And then Drax retires at the end of this year and then next year we'll look to get the second one back.
Correct.
Is the goal eventually to get it to three?
Not, not my, not to my knowledge. My understanding would be to have two.
Okay.
That, that can be looked at, but I've never, not heard of that.
The, the other, I was question is, when Parks was here in September and gave us their report, they talked about increasing the rec fees for, for the upcoming year. And they had a little bit of a surplus. Is that, was that included in their budget? Increasing the fees for their summer program?
I believe any fee increases that were suggested to keep up with the costs for like programs were included in the estimates that were provided in the general fund.
Yes.
Because I was, I was hoping we don't increase the fees for township residents. Increase it for the, for out of township residents. I don't know the, the breakdown of numbers of how that would affect it, but I think it's a, it's a wonderful.
I think for the pavilion, like the pavilion use fees and that, I think there was no increase.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the camp. I'm sorry.
Summer camp.
The summer camp.
There's no, I don't believe there's an increase proposed to their fees for the, for the camp.
Okay, because she.
Yeah, just the expenses, but I think that we've, we've been receiving enough revenue to cover, to cover those expenses.
Correct. She mentioned about potentially raising the revenue and, or to help raise revenue to increase the fees for the camp. And I would, I would not be in favor of increasing the fees for township residents for the camp.
Is not.
Is not.
No, I didn't. Yeah. The direction I was gave was not to raise them.
Yeah, no, after we had the final numbers come back of what was spent versus what was brought in, there's no need to raise the fee.
Correct.
Because like I said, when she was, that was a discussion.
Yeah, I think we had another discussion since then, the direction was given not to raise the rates.
That was talked about due to, we didn't have all the receipts back yet for everything that was purchased, but we were under on that. So there will be no reason to increase that.
And then she, is she going to continue or Parks going to continue to, the dollar increase for returning staff to keep those experienced people?
I believe it's.
That is accounted for in the budget. Yes.
I don't know.
Yeah, when you said increases, I'm sorry. I thought you meant on the expense side.
So did I. Yeah, my apologies.
But yeah, that is all factored into the budget, but on the revenue side of the fees or the program revenue.
Yeah, the program.
That has not changed.
Okay, because she did mention that. And then she was talking about, and I agree that doing something to keep the returning staff has a whole lot of, you know, recruitment's cheaper or retention's cheaper than recruitment. And if we can continue to do that dollar increase for returning staff.
Yes.
Would, would, I think would continue to help make the program even better.
It's built in.
Okay. And there was a $5,000 line item in, in Public Works for plantings. I'm a tree guy. Like I like to see more trees down, start to plant trees in the parkway along the paths, right? So you get the, get them to grow. Is that what that plantings is for?
That's for, not, it can be for that. What that's for, we put in there, like when it floods, if trees get knocked over, we try to replant it. When it does flood, we get a lot of damage by the boardwalk because those trees are not real mature yet. So we have replaced four or five trees almost every year down there. And it goes throughout the park systems, like at the signs and stuff like that. But if that's where we want it to go, I have no problems buying the trees and putting them in.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see us start to develop the trees. I understand, you know, there's, it's really nice. But in the summer, I think it's just going to be very hot on a McAdam.
Okay.
Number one, and I think it will add ambiance to the, to that new part of the trail that you, that you've made, especially towards the goof bridge side.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. I'm not opposed to any of that or anything.
I know it's leaves and all that stuff, but I think in time, they would, it would look enhanced the thing. So I don't know if that $5,000 is how much that'll get, how many trees that'll get us. But if we could plant 10 trees or whatever down along there.
Yeah, we, on an average, a tree costs us, we either go through Lehigh Valley Gardens or I do not remember the name, Matt Miller deals with a tree guy. So he gives us very good prices. Our average tree range from $200 to $300. And that's a decent sized caliber tree already. It's probably about seven, eight feet tall, three, four inch caliber around the trunk. So as you can see, 5,000 will cover a decent amount, might not cover as many as we need. But we could look if we are under budget on a different line and we want to complete that whole project in one year, we could look at using the materials money for that also.
Yeah, we want to do it, but I'd just like to see a start down that road of, of.
And with Vista's Park, with those improvements, we're doing a robust planting plan there as well, too.
It's all wide open.
Yep. Yep. That'll be much.
What I'll do then is this winter, I'll have our Parks employee. She has horticulturist background. She has certificates. I'll have her take a look at it, what trees would work the best due to the flooding down there. We also don't want the roots to lift the new trail, crack it and break it. She'll know exactly what we need to put down there. And I'll tell her to space them out nicely. They have to be even though, because that would drive me crazy if it's not. And then.
Can't we stagger them so they throw shade on a different?
Yeah, on both sides. Yes, we could definitely look at that. And I'll have her lay it out, see exactly how many trees it is. And we could start that project next year. That's not.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I wanted to clarify the scanning project. So that's in there as a capital project. So technically our auditors confirmed that we should look at that as a general fund project, but it was originally put in as capital due to the amount. But what we need to do for that project, if you're inclined to move forward with it, would be to assign fund balance, which is essentially what we do with the capital projects anyway. But we would assign it with, with a formal action in the budget and that's allowed per GASB standards. But once that would be assigned, you could then stagger the project over a number of years. So it wouldn't have to necessarily be all in 24. So if we wanted to prioritize, say like the off-site trailers and the Conex trailers, you know, we, we would come back to you later for the approval of each, each phase, each segment, you know? So not necessarily saying we have to do it all next year, but I would like to get a movement going in terms of, you know, having a plan to make sure that we don't have all this deferred inventory that is, that is off-site and not readily accessible.
Do we rent like these Conex units and trailers? Is that a fee?
We own them, yeah.
Non-roadworthy. So we would have to.
Are you talking like a tractor trailer trailer, not just like a shipping container?
We have one shipping, one shipping container like that and two tractor trailers that are off-site, one tractor trailer that is onsite of documents that need to be scanned. And then if we have to keep it, keep it. If not, then it can be destroyed.
Yeah, once we scan it in PDA, PDFA format, we can notify the state, we can index it, we can archive it and we should be able to destroy most of it, if not all.
I think this is certainly a project that's been put off for a multitude of years in this township. Is that correct? Have we had any program to?
We, we've, we do a little bit each year, but not, not the, not the past prod, like, like we try to, like Dave Manhard will have in his budget between 5,000 to 30,000 each year to try to get ahead of it. But it's not been a meaningful amount. Everything that, that's offsite is just, to your point, has been deferred for maybe 30, 40 years. Yeah.
I'm certainly in favor of getting this necessary project brought up to speed and get the township on a better plane to move forward and not have 30-year, 20-year, 10-year documents.
Yeah, I would recommend we assign the funds and then I come back to you for each phase of it with, with a targeted plan, you know, to, that we would, you know, I, I think it would be unmanageable to do it all at once. So I would basically, if it takes three, four years, whatever it takes, but at least we have the funds then reserved. Yeah.
I would be in agreement.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Just so that you all know, if you're, if you take a look at your capital fund cover sheet, it would change the inter-fund transfer from general funds 24 cash carry forward from that 1.5, I don't have the number in front of me.
What page are you on?
57 in your book.
Thank you.
We're going to tell you the new numbers based on the moving of the scanning project.
Thank you.
Replacing page 57.
Okay.
It was originally.
All of these.
Everyone's on board with starting the project and signing the funds? Okay, thank you.
Great.
Tommy, you good?
We'll give you copies, obviously, when we make new books. We just want you to know the new numbers.
To be able to write them in ahead of, ahead of next week. So your first line number on the original cover sheet should be a 3,067,358. That number would change.
Page 57 in your book.
Okay. I want to wait till she's there before I start. I want to have numbers. Are you good, Monica? Okay. So that number would now be 2,388,909. The capital fund revenue for 2025, that number is 295,966. The capital fund 2024 cash carry forward number is unchanged. The inter-fund transfer from open space is also unchanged. And the inter-fund transfer from general funds 24 carry forward, removing that suggested encumbered earmarked encumbered use for scanning, that number would change to. earmarked encumbered use for scanning, that number would change to 848,96972. Because the mechanism by which we would use to complete that project would be committing those cash carry forward numbers in a different way. I'm sorry, 848,96972. And all of these sheets and numbers will represent all of the tweaks and adjustments, very short list of tweaks and adjustments, but it will, it will represent all of the things that we discussed tonight. So your, your sheet will be much cleaner than all of our chicken scratch on the sheet that was presented in the workshop docs.
And as, as we go through this scanning process, we may not have to spend all this money once we go through the actual records. That was literally doing everything. So some of this stuff, we don't have to keep. We can just destroy it. We don't even need to scan it if, if it's not useful to us. So that's why I prefer to do it in phases. And as opposed to just, you know, spending everything and scanning stuff we don't really even need potentially.
Makes sense. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
That said, take a deep breath, all of us. That is the 2025 budget for all funds as presented to you all in workshop form. I think we all have clear direction on some adjustments that we need to make ahead of presenting the full board with the first reading of the proposed budget, which is right now scheduled for Wednesday of next week.
Excellent. Thank you, Tricia, Kristen, Herb, Tom, I mean, the entire staff are working year round to bring this together for us, but this is such an improved format and snapshot, the way that the line items are broken out for us, just tremendous work. I just want thank you all and looking forward to moving forward into the new year.
For sure. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
My only additional comment would be that the process gets better every single year. Our discussions, I think, get better every single year. We can actually do a deep dive into certain items and it's, it's not certainly not what it used to be in, in the most positive way possible.
Take that as a compliment. We all do. Thank you for that.
Thank you so much for your hard work. I remember going through it and looking at IT and thinking, okay, I had a question about it and then I just kept going and there it was, all itemized. So thank you for making it so much easier. You guys did all the hard work. Thank you.
I think it's been really important for us to make sure that it's presented to all of you and honestly to, you know, any layman's person that just doesn't understand finance or revenues and expenses to the degree that, you know, we've all been exposed to. It's, the conversations while already difficult are somehow slightly easier when it's presented in a way where we feel like it's clear to all of you and it's clear to the public when they log onto the website and look at the proposed budget or when they're, you know, listening in on, on a meeting like tonight. You know, we take great pride in being able to present it to you guys in, in a, in a clear way. So just continue to improve on that. But I, I know I speak for the entire budget team and Donna's sick, so she, I believe she's walked on right now. I speak for the entire budget team when I say thank you for all of the compliments. We really do appreciate it. A lot of really hard work. A lot of lost hours of sleep. All of that goes into this. So, but at the end of the day, we're, we're proud of the product, especially when we receive the feedback that we do, in addition to that just healthy conversation, that a good and healthy devil's advocate back and forth. It's, it's healthy for the whole process.
Yeah, answering questions, you know, I appreciate that. We talked about the revenue and all that stuff. You just able to justify and that, that's fine. Just, you know, we just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have, have to have a tougher conversation down the road and, and all your answers were well thought out and had, had the data to back it. So it was well, a lot of research. You're right.
Commissioner Peichel, if you don't think for a second that I am going to be sitting in this chair a year from now going, oh, was he, was he right? Were they right? Did we, did we overshoot? Man, you're wrong. I'm going to spend probably the next, the next 11 months watching the financials to see what that number comes in at.
I'm going to watch, I'm going to watch the weather next year.
Right. And there's so many, there's so many variables.
Yeah.
You know, if we, if you can't be afraid to, you know, we ask why.
Yeah.
And, you know, we started the why and then we talk and, and yeah, you, I understand what you're saying. I get you. I'm, I'm good with it. Whether they reach it or not, you know, they have a good year, a bad year. I just, you know, wanted to make sure that we're not being.
Soda bet, lunch bet. You know, I think too, you know, many of us come from other municipalities and, you know, we've, we've all, we've all heard the horror stories, right? We've heard the horror stories of municipalities and townships trying to balance budgets based on overestimating revenues. And again, that, you know, the only response I have to that is like, we really don't, like, we want to be the ones sitting here going, see, like, we crushed it, right? We don't want to be the ones going, oof, we didn't make it because then it's just a harder conversation. It's never intentional, just a harder conversation. So we'll always err on the side of conservative.
But where, where's the vacancy factor?
What?
So there was a time when you had a municipality that you figured in the vacancy factor for salaries.
Oh, that number, right? That number that just always magically appeared. Yeah, trust me, we.
Because you're going to have people leave.
Understand. So thank you for all of that. You know, it's, it's a good process. It's a good process. It's, it's good for the public to see this level of transparency.
If there are no other comments, move on to agenda item six, which is courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone online with any public comment? We need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.